11:00 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The regular meeting is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with those persons that are physically in the room with us today, and then move to the Q online. I have two individuals, and it's my understanding that you would like to be at the table together. I have Hussein in name and Sarah Amin. I apologize if I meant to pronounce names. Okay. And go ahead and have a seat. And then we'll start whoever wants to do the first public comment, and then we'll move to the other person, okay? Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me the privilege of speaking at this meeting. My name is Sarah Amin, and I am a senior at Star International Academy, where I've attended school for 13 years. Star International Academy is a charter school part of Hamadi Educational Services, an educational service that has been serving the community and providing students with exceptional education and once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for 25 years now. We were founded by Mrs. Noel Hamadi and currently led by Superintendent and President of Schools, Dr. Ali Bezzi. Recently, HES has launched a career technical education center named the NEST. The NEST currently houses a student-led radio station, Certified Nurse Assistant Program, and Child Development Associate Program. These courses are open to all high school students, giving them a hands-on experience, a hands-on learning experience. Not only does the CTE Center give students a hands-on experience, but it takes them outside of the classroom, allowing them to learn in an environment where they are in control and get a feel for the workforce. This program has opened the door of opportunities for many students, allowing them to be licensed nurse assistants or child development associates right after graduating. The first of its kind in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights community, HES opened a radio station by students and for students. The NEST radio station is a completely student-led bilingual station providing the community with English and Arabic segments. As executive director leading the station, I have been given the opportunity to learn in a completely different way than the traditional concept of learning. Every day, I lead the students' part of the program and plan what airs for the community. In addition, I have learned how to work state-of-the-art broadcast equipment and technology, which has allowed us students to expand our skill set and find a deep passion for the world of broadcasts. We are currently an online-based radio station. However, for the future, we plan to get licensed by the FCC and become an FM station. This radio station has given us students a voice and has allowed us to connect with our community in ways never done before. We have also been presented with the opportunities of meeting and interviewing influential figures in our community and the broadcast world such as J-Towers, further enriching our learning experience. It has been an absolute privilege speaking to you on behalf of Star International Academy and the NEST radio station. Us students, thank you for all that you do and the decisions you make with us in mind. We'd love to have you all come visit the station and see what we're about.
Thank you. And then whenever you're ready as well.
First and foremost, I wanted to thank you all for granting us the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Hassan Alnameh, and I'm also a senior at Star International Academy, which is a charter school in Dearborn Heights. Currently, I'm heavily involved with the newly established CTE Center, which has opened up a world of possibilities for our students and our community. And I just wanted to give you the perspective of someone in the center working through each program. As a student in the CNA program, which is Certified Nursing Assistant, I found that it's the first hands-on class I've ever been in, and the difference it makes in my learning experience is remarkable. Getting to actively apply what I've learned has not only deepened my understanding, but also made the entire educational journey more engaging and rewarding. This journey has not only shaped my education, but also my future career aspirations, and I'm very excited to see where it leads. Being a part of the NEST radio station at Star International Academy has also been truly enlightening. It's my first step into the world of radio, and it's been an engaging and fulfilling experience. What stands out the most is how this experience has ignited a genuine passion within me. It's as if I've discovered a new form of self-expression and creativity that I had never fully explored before. I eagerly anticipate the promising possibilities and potential future opportunities that this newfound passion may lead me to. And lastly, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you all for allowing us the opportunity to share our experiences, and thank you so much for listening to our stories and supporting our journey.
Thank you so much. We will move now to the participant online.
It's been engaging.
Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Best I can.
Thank you. If you would please state your name, where you're calling from, and you may begin your three minutes after that.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Lester, a board member of the Michigan Association of School Librarians, MAFL, and the immediate past president of the American Association of School Librarians. I wanted to thank the Michigan Department of Education for their press release congratulating the Allen Park High School Library Media Center and Library Media Specialist Melissa Lambert for earning the state's 21st Century Model School Library FL 21 Award for the 2023-2024 school year. The model FL 21 program recognizes high-quality school libraries and library media specialists and promotes the development of similar initiatives in other schools. The program is based on the Library of Michigan School Library 21st Century Benchmark, and the Allen Park High School Library Media Center holds exemplary status in the FL 21 program. Congratulations to Melissa Lambert for her excellent work in supporting her school community with high-quality teaching and learning, as well as resources to support all students and their achievement and their future success. I know that Allen Park High School Library, as well as previous winners of this recognition, are available to consult with school district leaders, school librarians, and educators who want to develop or expand their vision for their school library programs. I know that Melissa Lambert would welcome any state Board of Education member who would be interested in visiting to see a high-quality school library. I hope that you will visit. The Michigan Association of School Librarians believes that access to high-quality libraries staffed by a certified school librarian, such as Ms. Lambert, is important to achieve equity and literacy in our state. We hope to be able to continue to partner with the Michigan Department of Ed to move towards this goal. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment for today.
Thank you very much, presenters. Thank you, Ms. Evans. You know it's a Baron meeting when the only person who is left out in the audience is Mr. Howard Baron. We're now at that point in the Agenda, Board Members, where it's the approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of September 12, 2023. Could I please have a motion to approve? Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support from Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board. We're now at the approval of minutes of the Legislative Committee meeting of September 28, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Dr. Pritchett. Do I have a second? Second from Dr. Robinson. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Please.
So I think we just got an email with the recording. Is it, no?
No. So when I sent out the agenda a week ago, it had the MP4 at the bottom of that.
Oh, I did a search for it. I didn't see it.
It was in, it was that link.
Okay.
Any other discussion associated with the Legislative Committee meeting minutes of September 28, 2023? Hearing and seeing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Carry, motion carries.
Board, approval of NASB. It's the National Association of School Boards of Education. Voting items and designation of NASB voting delegate for the annual business meeting. Can I please have a motion to approve the NASB voting delegate? Moved by Ms. Lipton, supported by Mr. Bullock. Is there any discussion associated therewith? If Ms. Lipton, you are moving. Tell us who you're recommending for this, this exalted position.
I am recommending my co-president, board member Tiffany Tilly, who has been very active in NASB and has personally taught me a lot about what NASB is all about as I join the board.
All right. So we have a, we have a motion for Ms. Tilly to be the NASB voting delegate for Michigan State Board of Education, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Is there any discussion associated therewith? Yes.
Well, the link that we got, it appears that we're also supposed to know something about Kevin Ellis and Fern DeJard. Are we supposed to, are we doing something about approving them as well?
Well, first you get to vote on Ms. Tilly, and then you get to vote on them.
Oh, okay. I didn't know there was two votes. I apologize.
Very exciting. Lots of hanging chads in the, in the offing. Any other discussion on Ms. Tilly? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Motion carries.
Okay. May I please have a motion to direct Michigan's voting delegate, Ms. Tilly, co-Vice President Tilly, to vote for the candidates who are running unopposed for the NASB Board of Directors seats? So Dr. Robinson moves, and Mr. Bullock seconds. Any discussion associated therewith?
Yeah. Has nominations been closed? Or could there be other people that, that are nominated?
It is my understanding that nominations are closed. Can anyone confirm that?
Yes.
Okay.
So nobody can run, except a write-in?
Somebody wants to be write-in, but yeah, the nominations are over.
Was there any background on these two candidates?
On the NASB website.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board. At 1:31 PM, the next item on today's agenda is a presentation on student vaccinations for childhood illness. In this presentation, representatives from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services will be providing an update on childhood immunization rates of schoolchildren in Michigan. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Finance and Operations, Dr. Natasha Bagdisarian, Chief Medical Officer, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Sarah Lyon Calo, State Epidemiologist and Public Health Director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required.
Thank you.
Presenters, welcome.
Thank you so much. We're so pleased to be here today in front of this exalted group. Thank you for all that you do for education in the state of Michigan. My name is Dr. Natasha Bagdisarian. I'm the Chief Medical Executive for the state of Michigan. I think you know my two co-presenters today, Dr. Lyon Calo and Dr. Golzinski. My background is that I am an infectious disease physician and epidemiologist, and I just want to share a little bit of an update with you in terms of what is happening around the state. So I would like to start out with a little bit of an update in terms of childhood immunizations. So I'm not talking here about things like COVID-19 vaccine or influenza vaccine. We're talking about routine vaccinations that have been recommended in many cases for decades, things like polio, measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, pneumococcal vaccine. And what I'd like to show you up on the screen is we have a map looking at childhood vaccine series coverage by county in 2011. And the green counties are the counties with vaccination rates with a coverage of 70% or lower. So the yellow is higher coverage, the green is lower coverage. So this is what things look like in 2011. Now, if you take a look at 2017, most of the state, the vast majority of the state, was yellow. We had higher vaccination. We had really achieved good vaccination rates for most of the state. And here is where we are in 2023. So you can see that 2023, we have actually taken a step backwards, and we are now seeing historic lows for the last decade in terms of routine childhood immunization coverage. When we look at what this means in terms of children attending schools with low completion of vaccine series, that number has been going up. And you can see, this is a look at our vaccine series coverage just overall and how we've been doing over the past just over a decade. And you can see that that number has significantly declined. And we are at 66% vaccine coverage statewide. What this means is that there are fewer children covered for things like measles, mumps, rubella, polio, and other devastating illnesses today than we had in 2017. It also means for schools that if there is a single case of imported measles, for example, there is a much greater likelihood of this turning into a big outbreak. In Ohio last year, they saw a large outbreak of measles with about 96 children who needed to be hospitalized. So you can see the consequences of outbreaks like this can be quite devastating. And this is just sort of a look at the data in the same way, looking at counties with that coverage of 70% or lower going up. I will switch now and talk about what we are expecting this fall and winter in terms of respiratory viruses. So as you know, the weather is getting colder, and we are heading into cold and flu season or respiratory virus season. We're no longer just thinking about COVID. We're thinking about all the things that like to transmit at this time of year. The list of viruses that like to transmit in the cold winter months is too long to name, but the three that are the biggest troublemakers, if you will, are COVID-19, influenza, and RSV. If you take a look at that graph, you can see what things looked like last year. And this is statewide, looking at emergency department visits. What we saw last winter was we saw coinciding or overlapping peaks. So we saw these viruses hitting at the same time, which put a really, a really great burden on especially our pediatric emergency departments. So if you remember last year, they were asking for assistance. They were really facing a lot of staffing challenges and bed challenges. Now, this year, you can see that we've already started to see those COVID-19 numbers in Michigan start to tick up. The good news is there's potential that we have plateaued for the time being, and that's what we've seen in some other parts of the country. But we know these viruses like to transmit during the cold winter months. A couple of reasons for that. They love to, or they can survive on surfaces longer when the weather is cold and dry. And they also love being, they love transmitting in indoor settings that are poorly ventilated. So as more people gather for the holidays, for example, these types of respiratory viruses love to transmit. So we're watching this trend very closely. When we look ahead in terms of what that could mean for emergency departments, schools, our modeling, so this is modeling from the Centers for Disease Control, shows a couple of different scenarios are possible. Scenario A is a better-case scenario. And if those peaks of viruses are not all overlapping, things could look better than they did last winter. However, if those peaks overlap again, if we start seeing RSV and COVID and influenza all transmitting at the same time, we will see something that feels very similar to last winter when those pediatric emergency departments were feeling the strain. In terms of tools, we have many, many tools. We have many tools so that this year does not have to look as bad as it did last year. So not only is there a new COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccine that's out, so the 2023-2024 vaccine, we also, of course, have the annual influenza vaccine, and we have some new products for RSV. Those are not primarily for school-aged children, but we have vaccines and antibodies that are available for those over the age of 60 and for infants going through their first RSV season. And by protecting those extremes of age, we're protecting our communities. We continue to have those at-home tests for COVID-19. We continue to have tests for influenza, and we have therapeutics for both of those. And so the message here is that things don't have to be as bad as they were last year. Definitely, we are expecting that things will be better than they were in 2020 and 2021 with those big surges, because we do, of course, have tools, and there's lots of immunity in our communities right now. But encouraging folks to get the latest vaccines to boost their immunity will, of course, be helpful. So I wanted to just share with you what was happening in terms of those routine vaccinations overall in the state. We do have a website that's hosted by MDHHS that we can share with you where folks can actually look up the immunization rates of their schools so they can see, for example, what their routine vaccination rates are for their particular school building. And where that could be really helpful is if someone has a child who's immunocompromised, for example, a child with leukemia or other, or other malignancies, you can see what the risk of infectious disease outbreaks is in that particular school. And then as much as we can do to advise people on the tools we have available, including the biggest tool, and that is asking parents to keep their children home when they are sick. So no matter what it is, whether it's COVID or something else, if your child is coughing and sneezing and having a fever, the best place for them to be is not at school. So that's all I have in terms of my prepared remarks, but I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bagdisarian. We appreciate that. Good to see you as well, Dr. Lyon Calo. Board members, your questions on childhood vaccinations, childhood illnesses, many of which I had back in the day. Questions? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. This was really interesting. I wasn't aware of this, this data point on Slide 3 and 4. I'm just curious, I mean, because that's, it seems to me, you know, just looking at it, it's a, a lot more green on the 2023 map. Is that something that's unique to Michigan, in your opinion? Or is that something that we're seeing in other states? It varies a little bit state to state. And as we look at the why, because my big question is always why, a couple of themes have emerged. One is that there were fewer parents taking their children in for routine healthcare visits during the pandemic. And so it's possible that those routine visits where immunizations were happening, they didn't happen at the same pace. And maybe some of those parents are slower to get their kids back into that routine, you know, seeing their pediatrician sort of cadence. That could be part of it. But the other thing that we really saw was things became so tense and politicized during COVID-19 that I think some of our public health messaging is just not hitting the same way. And what we are trying to do is really talk about these just in terms of health and not, hopefully, removing it from some of the divisiveness that we saw during COVID, because we all want the same thing. We all want our kids to be healthy and live healthy lives, free of disease. And so I think if we can get back to that discussion on the topic of health rather than making it about anything else, maybe it will help folks feel the same level of trust that they had in public health messaging.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Q?
Thank you all for coming. Thank you for being here. And it's so good to see you, Dr. Lyon Calo. I just have to say a shout-out. We used to travel back in the day. But, you know, one of the questions that I really, that I have, and then I have some thoughts as well, is around the study. Have we seen the study that was completed with the ISDs? I don't know if you all have been a part of that as much as Eagle has been a part of that, the study that's looking at the school buildings as we talk about ventilation.
Right. No, so that, that's a study that's largely being overseen by Oakland Schools. And it's a study, school building by school building, district by district, across the state to assess building needs.
Okay. You know, my mind just thinks holistically around these issues. And just as we're talking about these being respiratory illnesses, and we know, we have Ms. Jackson sitting down there, and we know classroom sizes, and unfortunately, and many of our school buildings are jam-packed, and we're still in the same buildings that we were in. We've addressed some of the ventilation issues. But I'm just hoping that we don't let our foot off, off the pedal on those issues, because there's many of us, Sarah, that were talking about this long before a COVID, long before a Flint water crisis, and that we have to continue to look at these building conditions that our school, children are spending quite a bit of their time in. And I was really happy to see with the last budget is that we know that MDE, DHHS, as well as Eagle, will be working much more closely together. So would love to hear that conversation in a setting like this with, with all of those entities engaged. Because there's also climate change, and we know that, you know, we will continue to see these illnesses, the conditions being right for these illnesses to increase and making sure that whatever we can handle, we're able to do that in those environments, making sure that we're addressing those environmental issues. And didn't want to get too wonky there. But getting to the, to the politics of things, and I know we always try to be real careful in these spaces, but we know that misinformation, disinformation has helped to proliferate these unfortunate numbers that then result in health outcomes that are not good for our children, keep our children out of schools. And then we get into the circular talk about absenteeism. And unfortunately, you know, the anti-science rhetoric, a lot of it that has been spewed from this table here, has helped to move this agenda forward. That's not necessarily a question for you all, and you all can look straight-faced. But I just need to make sure that, that we put that out, is that we have people who do disregard science to push an agenda. And we unfortunately cannot be silent about that, because this is the data that, that comes out of, out of that. And I'm sorry to be looking at you all down there. Just, again, just look through me. But we know that that is happening. Unfortunately, the politics is, is impacting our children. It's impacting their health, and it's impacting their ability to show up in schools to be able to learn.
Thank you very much. What, what, that was, I just want to be clear. That was a statement. That was not a.
That was a statement, and it wasn't directed at them. I just looked down that way.
Okay. All right. They don't feel particularly impugned, it doesn't look like. Very good. Thank you very much, Dr. Q. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you so much for coming today. I definitely requested for you to be here. I think it's important for you to be at the table. You said there's an uptick with COVID. So what are we seeing right now? What's the projections? What's the advice? And then also, do you foresee any time during this school district that we would go back to wearing masks? to wearing masks? And are there any safety issues with the masks?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. I'll pull up this graph again because I think this graph is a good way to look at what's happening right now with that uptick. So the, those previous, that previous uptick was last winter. So you can see what our cases looked like last winter, not at this time of year. This was not, not so much in October, but that peak was in December, early January. Now, where we are now, you know, if we move, gosh, I hate being so far away from my graphs, but if we move down a little bit, that next bump shows you where we are right now. And there's one really good piece, there's two actually really good pieces of information here. Yeah. Thank you so much, Dr. Rice. Just imagine that's my finger. Dr. Rice is my finger. Two really good, good, good ways to look at this is, number one, where we started was from an all-time low since we've been in COVID. So when you go back and look at July, I mean, that line is almost at 0%. So we started at a low, which is fantastic, yes. And so even when we saw the little bump, because we started from such a low, it wasn't anything that overwhelmed the health systems. And also what we see is that that little bump seems to have plateaued. It has a little bit of a flat top to it and maybe even a slight decline. And that's what we have seen nationally. So when we look at the national trends, what seems to have happened this year and last year and even the year before is when there is a COVID uptick at this, this time of year, it tends to start in the southern states because they go back to school earlier. And many of those southern states, folks are indoors in air conditioning in August, whereas we are outdoors enjoying our nice August weather. And that's what we saw. We saw the uptick starting in places like Texas, California, Florida, and then we were hit a little bit later. Then we saw those other states start to plateau, and now it looks like perhaps we have plateaued as well. But where do we think this is going? We think that those cases are probably going to go up through the fall and winter because that's the way that this virus likes to transmit. You know what? It can survive on surfaces for a little bit longer. It loves being in indoor settings. So what will probably happen is, and these are the projections here, is it will probably be either not as bad as it was last year or about the same as it was last year. So when we go back to this graph, those peaks may not be as high as they were last year, but last year was not a good cold and flu season for the emergency departments. They were struggling, especially our Peds emergency departments and Peds hospitals. So I would like for that peak not to be as high as it was the year before. And this is a really good way of looking at it because it's not just about COVID. It's about all the things that transmit. It's about influenza, RSV, and then the number of viruses that we don't even put names to that transmit at this time of year. I could, I could give you a whole page of them. And that's why it's really important for kids to stay at home, even if their COVID test is negative or their influenza test is negative, because we're trying to keep all that crud out of the, crud is the technical scientific term for it. We're trying to keep all the crud out of the school buildings.
What about the masks?
So, you know, one, one way that I look at this is that we've got a whole lot more tools now than we did in 2020 or 2021. If we look at this grid here, not only do we have a COVID vaccine and a flu vaccine, but we've got these new products for RSVs. We've got protective antibodies for RSV. We've got testing that you can now get free in libraries and YMCA's, mailed to your home from the federal government, available over the counter in pharmacies, and we've got therapeutics. So if we use all of these tools, it means we're not going to be in the same place that we were in 2020 and 2021 where, you know, we were really seeing those sky-high peaks. And so masking becomes less of a, it becomes something we have to rely on less. But masking, of course, we know that if you are sick, if you're someone who is coughing and sneezing into the environment and you put a mask on, you are putting a whole lot fewer droplets into the environment. So one of the pieces of advice that not only am I giving now, but that we've used in hospitals for infection prevention for decades, is if you've got someone who is coughing and sneezing, if you can't keep them away from everyone else, the next best thing is to give them a mask so it's not going six feet into the air. It's staying, all the crud stays in the mask.
What the, the current variant, what are, what's the current variant and what's the effects that we're seeing on patients, you know?
So there was a variant that was in the news a whole lot, that you may have been hearing about, that Dr. Lion Callow had a really good term for it, and that was scariant. It seemed like a scariant in the news. And that one has not panned out to be as scary as folks were anticipating. It didn't seem to evade the vaccines as much as they had thought. It didn't seem to put people in the hospital at a greater rate. And in fact, the current variants that are circulating right now, there's really good data to show that this new vaccine, the 2023-2024 vaccine, covers those variants and that the therapeutics we have like Paxlovid, Malnupiravir, that those are also effective against the currently circulating variants. But I will say, I'm sorry I'm talking so much. As you can tell, I love talking about infectious diseases, but there's always a potential for new variants to pop out. And the more the virus transmits, the more it has an opportunity to make errors in replication, which is where new variants come out. So this is, it's a constant cat and mouse game. You know, it's always trying to be a couple steps ahead of us and we're always watching it and trying to get in front of the virus.
What are we seeing? I know previously we were dealing with issues of students catching the virus. What are we seeing currently?
We're seeing people affected at all ages. But one piece of information that is very reassuring is that even though people are getting COVID, we're not seeing the severe outcomes in folks who are vaccinated. So we're not seeing people end up at anywhere close to the same rates we saw earlier in the pandemic. We're not seeing the same rates of folks ending up in the ICU, on ventilators, or dying. And it's a combination of things. Number one, there are a lot of folks who've been vaccinated in the community. And number two, there are a lot of folks who've had COVID. And those two things together provide us with a level of community immunity so that we are not seeing those severe outcomes the way we were two years ago.
So currently, when, and you were right that it started in the south, because I know a lot of Michiganders were south and then they came back with COVID. Currently, what are we seeing with how it's affecting people when they're sick now? Because from my understanding, it's still pretty bad and people are having it for weeks.
Yeah. So, you know, you bring up a really good point because a lot of people, when they hear about severe COVID, they think about people really feeling crummy. When we talk about severe COVID, I'm talking about people ending up in the ICU. So we're not seeing, my definition of severe COVID, we're not seeing people in the ICU to the same degree, on ventilators or dying, but we are still seeing people who feel awful, who are having fevers and chills. We're still seeing cases of long COVID. But again, if we use all the tools we have, the vaccines, the therapeutics, the testing, the staying at home, I cannot emphasize enough the staying at home, the more we can prevent those severe cases from happening.
Thank God we're not seeing it as severe as it was before. What about the conditions after COVID is over? How is that? Is it still severe with that or is that getting better?
You mean the long COVID?
Yes.
We are still seeing folks with long COVID. And it's actually going to take years for us to fully understand the implications of long COVID because studies are ongoing and this is still a new virus. We've only had it around since the beginning of 2020. And so it is going to take time for us to really understand how long some of these symptoms last, what the long-term effects are going to be. What are the effects five years after someone has had an infection? We don't know because we haven't had five years or 10 years. And so those studies are happening in Michigan and around the country and around the world.
Has your understanding it better? Have you come out with any new protocols for schools?
There are not new protocols for schools. But again, you know, part of, I think, I hope, what you all are hearing in my presentation is that it's not just about COVID anymore. It's about all the things that make kids sick. And what can we do to just keep our kids healthy and in the classroom and learning to the best of their abilities? Because, you know, a child can't learn if they're hungry or if they're having a hard time breathing or if they're coughing. So what can we do to keep kids really healthy so that they're in the classroom and they're fully able to take all of that learning that you all are helping to provide?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Other questions or comments from board members?
Sure.
Mr. McMillan, first bite of the apple.
Yeah, as far as the IFR infectious, infectious fatality rate, infection fatality rate for zero to 19, what's the difference between vaxxed and non-vaxxed for COVID here in Michigan?
For zero to 19?
Yeah.
I would have to divide it up by age group, but overall...
No, not overall. I want to know students.
Then I would have to look that up. I don't have it.
Don't know it offhand?
No, I don't.
You come here and you're, okay, that's odd. Is natural immunity helpful or not for COVID?
Absolutely.
Okay, it is. Because we were, I brought that up and I was told that the science was wrong. That's bad science. Okay, thank you.
No, I think any, sorry. Excellent question, and I think that it all plays a part. So natural immunity plus vaccine-derived immunity, they together work synergistically to provide us with a community-level immunity.
So without vaxxed, natural immunity has no benefit?
Nope. It definitely plays a part.
We were told that we're crazy and the science says it's not there. So anyway, thank you. And then how many boosters is the state recommending for kids zero to 19 in COVID?
We are no longer talking about this in terms of boosters. So previously, we had been talking about making sure that you had a primary series and then you had X number of boosters. We're now talking about this in terms of the newest vaccine. So have you had your 2023-2024 vaccine? And everyone ages six months and up is recommended to have a 2023-2024 vaccine.
And yet you have no idea what the IFR for six-month-old or two-year-old or 10-year-old or zero to 19?
I...
Non-vaxxed versus vaxxed?
I, I have a, I have a very strong understanding and passion for this, but I can't remember all of those statistics for each specific...
Those are not at much risk at all, though. For me, if that's possible, do you still want them to have the vax?
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you this much. It's not just about death. There are bad outcomes that don't include death. So for example, and this is just my N of one, but when my son got COVID at the age of, I think he was seven at the time, he ended up with prolonged fever, an emergency department visit, a blood draw, an EKG. Now, none of that would have been considered severe COVID. But for him and for my family, it was a very big deal. He was ill for several days. He was unable to participate in his activities for over a week. And all of those things were very invasive for an eight-year-old. So the way that I think we need to look at this is it's not just about death. We're trying to do far more than keep our kids from dying.
Okay. So individual instances might occur, but overall it might, kids might not be at risk very much, but, all right.
Well, kids are, of course, not living and going to school by themselves. There are a couple of hundred thousand adults in those schools with them who serve as breadwinners and heads of families for, for children across the state. So the seven or eight-year-old may be relatively minimally affected in terms of the possible gravity of outcomes, affected substantially for him or her, but not so much compared to what it could be, but could put his mother, father, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle in jeopardy.
And there are also many children who are immunocompromised, children with leukemia, with solid organ tumors, who I think we have to think about, who also attend schools, daycares, camps, and have the right to exist in a safe environment.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tilly and then Dr. Pugh.
What could the outcome possibly have been if we waited on natural immunity without the precautions that were taken? The precautions of the masks, the precautions of vaccines, the precautions of closing schools and businesses?
I think had we taken, had we made no interventions in those early days of COVID, we would have lost far, far more people than we already did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh.
And we also have to think about the elderly people who were shut in because there were people who wouldn't take those precautions and think about, and I know last week I was told we're not supposed to think about old people, but old people impact the lives of young people. My old dad, who I was late last month getting here because he was in the hospital and late again today because I was visiting him in the hospital, only half of that due to COVID. But it took a toll. And because he's in the hospital, my nieces, nephews, his great-granddaughter are, have had to take time out of their lives and spend time out of their schooling to come and see about their grandfather who has had a huge impact on their life. I will also say that the old people, like I said, are the ones who take our children to school. They have to be able to get to school some sort of way, many of our children. So I do want to mention that. And then the piece about the natural immunity versus the vaccine immunity. The research that I've seen is that the vaccine immunity is more durable.
Absolutely.
And less risky.
Yes.
So whether it's to that person or to the people who are being exposed by that irresponsible person. So, and then I also want to talk about some of the misinformation and disinformation because I continue to hear about masks not working. And I think people are referring to the Cochrane meta-analysis study, and that study does not look at how masks work or if masks work, and that's been misinterpreted. It's more so the compliance...
Yes.
...of mask use. So if you could explain that and how that, that information has been used to spread misinformation.
In fact, the authors of that Cochrane review issued a statement afterwards clarifying that point exactly because I think their study was so misinterpreted. Number one, this was not new data they were collecting. Cochrane just does systematic reviews and meta-analyses. So all they do is take information that is out there already and compile it. And they absolutely did not look at compliance of mask use. So if there is a requirement to wear masks and no one wears them, of course, those masks are not going to work. No one is wearing them. I can tell you that my background is in infection prevention in the hospital setting, and I worked in hospitals preventing infection for two decades, and we did it through the use of masks. And I have taken care of patients with tuberculosis and all kinds of other diseases, and I have done so safely, wearing a mask, myself and my colleagues.
You good?
Please. I just want to, the point that you made when you were looking at the chart that our Vanna White helped us with. But...
Could have been Vanna Rice.
Vanna Rice, I'm sorry.
I was about to say more white than Vanna.
But we were able to see what was happening, like in Texas and Florida and then Michigan, we'll be next. And so that's why we were asking people, please, just keep your mask or keep that tool that will help the teacher or keep the low immunity, risk, you know, immunity child in school. But we could see those trends. You know, those of us who read data could see that. And so we were just asking people to help out until immunity, herd immunity could...
We were just trying to use all the tools we have. And we didn't have all of these tools here. And so it's very important in infection control, we always talk about a Swiss cheese model where you're trying to stack up those, those pieces of Swiss cheese so that the holes don't line up. And so you're just blocking as much transmission as you can. And that's what we try to do when we're trying to control any infection, use as many mitigation strategies as we have. And if you don't have a vaccine and you don't have a therapeutics or a therapeutic, which we did not in early 2020, you use as many of those strategies as you have available.
And everybody do their part.
And everybody does their part, yep.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other questions? Mr. Bo.
Well, I'd like you to touch on a couple of things for me. So I actually was on the coronavirus task force for racial inequity.
Yes.
So the natural immunity versus herd immunity, vaccinations. So can you, like, explain, like, the herd immunity, like, for me?
Yeah.
So racial disparities in the predeterminants of health play a major role in... So, racial disparities and the predeterminants of health play a major role in where this happens. So ground zero was Detroit, the area. Like, for me, I come from the old school. One person gets the chickenpox. The next day, eleven kids are in the house, and everybody's getting their chickenpox. Yeah, nine, ten might, one may not because of their natural immunity, but that, they all are okay. But if you put ten kids in the same room who have COVID or coronavirus, four to six of them is probably going to get gravely ill, or it's going to be fatal. That's the difference for me in that. But also, in response to what President Pugh said about old folks are vital to the young folks, where we, the young folks, feed off the elderly. So, we, you know, I've got elderly members in my family who have those social predeterminants of health. So the kid coming home without protection, without immunization, then makes the elders ill, or they pass away because they don't have. I just need you to expound on.
Yeah. Everything you said is spot on. You know, in 2020, no one had immunity to COVID. So that was the difference. No one had immunity. And so, not only were, was the entire population vulnerable in that way, but then, what you mentioned, from that work we did with the Racial Disparities Task Force, there were certain communities where if there was higher levels of diabetes, and heart disease, and other underlying conditions, we saw much higher death rates. And so, not only were we all at some level vulnerable to COVID, because nobody had immunity, but there were also certain communities that were hit hardest because of those underlying conditions and those social determinants of health, things like not having access to healthcare.
And my last thing is, this wasn't just a US issue. This is a global pandemic. People were rocked by the same issue all over the world. This is like, it's not like it was just here in Michigan.
Yep.
This is a global pandemic. This is something that rocked the world.
Yes.
And everybody had to get together. So scientifically, it took all of the experts around the world to come up with a solution, not just us here.
Absolutely.
But I think to Board Member Tilly's point, it didn't have to be that way here. You know, if we would have followed the science, it just didn't have to be that way this long.
So any other Board Member comments or questions?
I just have a question if we can hear more again with a rounded body of folks around some of the exposure risk, like school buildings.
You bet. And I'm not sure, you know, we'll have some conversation about who the best people are to present on that, but we're talking clean air, clean water. You know, it may be a little group of Eagle, MDHHS, MDE, kind of a mix thereof, yes?
Yeah, I was going, because I had thought about it earlier, but then I lost it in another thought. But, so again, older city, buildings with asbestos, lead in the water, along with these other social determinants and these racial disparities, that has a major bearing on whether or not you're going to have natural immunity or need to vax, to be vaxxed. I was trying to put it in question form, but I couldn't.
That's okay. If I, if I could, in response to Dr. Pugh and Bullock, I wanted to just mention, because you both brought up the environmental factors. We do have a program at DHHS where schools can get free air purifiers, HIPAA purifiers. Not HIPAA, HEPA.
HEPA, H-E-P-A.
And so that is a tool, again, another tool that we can add to our arsenal that can protect against wildfire smoke, other particles that cause asthma, and respiratory viruses. So if, if you want to spread the word.
Right. And we know our schools are working on making those more built into their infrastructure. And I'm sure we'll get a report on that one day soon as well. But, but yes, those are, those are good in the meantime. But I think the word prevention is what we're talking about here. And, and letting the science lead us so that we don't have to experience the things that we've long talked about, again, as harshly, and especially for certain populations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Other Board Members? Presenters, thank you so much. Dr. Bagdusarian, Dr. Lion Callow. We heard, we learned two interesting, iffy little things today beyond the content.
And she'll get back to me on the IFR for the unvaccinated versus vaccinated for zero to nineteen.
We will reach out to her, and we will send that to you in Board Brief.
Thank you.
We heard about scariant, and we heard about community immunity.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You be well, guys. Take care.
And that you got a side hustle as a.
No side hustle. Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on student attendance, chronic absenteeism, and student attendance supports. During this presentation, we will share information on student attendance with a focus on chronic absenteeism and supports associated therewith. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of Educator Student and School Support, and Mr. Tom Howell, Director of the Center for Educational Performance and Information. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, Board. Today, we are presenting an update on attendance data trends and the necessary supports to address chronic absenteeism.
Seat looks a little low.
It is. It's okay.
He's tall.
As an overview.
Do we want a different, do we want a different seat?
I'm okay. I'll just, I'll just switch this one out.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, it just looks incredibly low. I mean.
Doesn't help to be six foot tall.
Oh, much better.
Oh, yeah.
So, as an overview, relevant to attendance data trends, we will share overall and by subgroups, the statewide rates and those for chronic absenteeism. Secondly, we will highlight student supports and share MDE historical efforts, our expanded learning over the past eighteen months, and our next steps moving forward. To start, let's take a look at the trends. Tom?
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today, Dr. Rice, and Board Members. Thanks for welcoming us. Keeping it brief, as Dr. Chapman indicated, we'll first take a look at some attendance trends overall and by subgroup. Then we'll look into an alternative measurement of attendance, which is chronic absenteeism, and we'll look at those from the same perspectives. Before we get into that, a couple definitions. In attendance, for purposes of state tracking, means that students are participating in more than fifty percent of their learning hours in a scheduled day. This does not include students who participate in shared-time learning, so non-pub or homeschooled students that may participate in a portion of a learning day. They're not included in this definition. Does not include students participating in a juvenile detention facility for their learning environment, nor with students participating in a DHHS-sponsored facility serving emotionally impaired students. The calculation is fairly straightforward. It's total days attended by students over the total days possible for those same students. All right. Statewide, the attendance rate increased ninety point five percent in 2022, 23 school year. That is up one point seven percentage points from the prior year. This is still below average for anything pre-pandemic in comparison. Intentionally looking at those relatively prior years, the guidance shifted over time, so it's important to keep that in mind. While we were measuring the same outcome over time, in 2019, 20, attendance was reported as recorded by districts prior to closure of the academic learning environment, which was March thirteenth-ish, I believe, in 2020. So it wasn't quite the full school year, but it was pretty comprehensive. In 2021, we had extended COVID learning plans, which allowed for a very different way of delivering education to students, and that varied across the model, across the state. So that had some impacts on this metric. And in 2022 was the year we returned to using the reporting requirements that were outlined in law prior to the pandemic. All right. The US Department of Education really does require states to consider many ways of looking at student groups. That is for analyzing anything under the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, IDA, and Perkins. Today, we'll take a look at those attendance rates through the lenses that US Department of Education requires, including things like economic status, English learner status, homeless status, special education status, and race and ethnic breakdowns. For students who are economically disadvantaged, the overall attendance rate last school year increased from eighty-six percent to eighty-eight point one percent. The year-to-year gap in attendance rates between economically disadvantaged students and those that were not economically disadvantaged decreased slightly from six point one percentage points to five point three. So we are moving in the right direction in terms of our attendance rates. The rates for English learners and non-English learners improved to ninety point five percent. That's not an error. Both of them came in at ninety point five percent. This reflects a one point two percentage point improvement for English learner students and a one point seven percentage improvement for non-English learner students. The three years prior to 2021, the attendance rate for English learner students really hovered around half a percentage point higher than that of non-English learner students. So apparently, both groups have come together over the last couple of years. All right. Attendance rates for homeless students improved by two point six percentage points to eighty-two point four percent. The gap in attendance rates between homeless and non-homeless students decreased slightly to eight point three percentage points. That's down from nine point two in the prior year. For the three years prior to 2021, the gap was around six point six to seven percentage points, depending on the year. So we still have a little room to make up there. Attendance rates for special, for students with disabilities, increased by two percentage points to eighty-eight point four percent. Again, the gap in attendance rates for students with disabilities decreased slightly from two point eight to two point five percentage points. We're getting relatively close to the pre-pandemic spread there, which hovered right around two point four percent in difference. You see a relatively consistent pattern of attendance by race and ethnicity over time. There isn't a real noticeable metric there. The attendance rate for each racial and ethnic group continued to improve in 2023. But those rates do correspondingly remain below pre-pandemic rates. All right. Very quickly again, because I know the data is not really exciting to go through all these numbers, but it's important context for what's to come. We'll take a look at an alternative measure of attendance, and it's relevant for our federal reporting on chronic absenteeism. So again, the federal government requires this measure. It's not very positive, right? Chronic absenteeism, sounds so negative, but it's what the federal government wants, and it's an important measure, and it's measured a little bit differently than we would measure an attendance rate. Students are chronically absent when they miss at least ten percent of the possible scheduled days of the school that they attend. Only students that are there for at least ten consecutive days are included in this measure. So we're not including students who are coming and going quicker than you would, a school would have a possibility of impacting in terms of learning trajectories. You know, chronic absenteeism, I think when a lot of people think about it, really brings up this picture of a child that's skipping school and deliberately avoiding the learning environment. We don't think that's typically the case, and we'll dig into those numbers in a minute. It's important to think about this, because if you look at a student who attends for purposes of chronic absenteeism, a student who is enrolled for all one hundred and eighty days of a school year, but only attends one hundred and sixty-three days of that school year, is not chronically absent. But another student that's enrolled for the same one hundred and eighty days attends one hundred and sixty-two days, one day fewer. They are chronically absent. So this is really a very different way of looking at attendance patterns. And we'll get into those numbers here in a moment. The percentage of chronically absent students decreased seven point seven percentage points in school year twenty-three to thirty point eight percent. That's still about ten percentage points above the rates of chronic absenteeism in the three years prior to the pandemic. Again, thinking about the statistic, unlike an attendance rate, this is a continuum. Rather than, it's not a continuum like an attendance rate. It's a toggle switch, right? Either you are, or you are not chronically absent. So again, what are those rates telling us? This slide really gets into looking at the bulk of students and breaking them up into parts of a continuum. The largest group here, of course, is greater than ninety percent. So the bulk of our students in Michigan attend a vast majority of their school days, and they are not chronically absent. But if you look over time, and you take a look at this chart, even looking at line two, we continue to see numbers improve when you add the first two categories. In 2018, eighty-nine percent of our students attended eighty-five percent or more of their school day. Same thing in 2019, same thing in 2020. 2021, we started to see a little bit of a dip during the pandemic, went down to eighty-six percent of our students. In 2022, unfortunately, seventy-seven percent of our students had hit that mark. In 2023, that came back up to eighty-two percent. So while we're not yet returned to the numbers that we're seeing pre-pandemic, I think overall, the bulk of students in our state are attending their learning environments. It's not as dire as some of the numbers might suggest when not thinking of this in the right context. Okay, we'll quickly, not prickly, quickly, break down using the same student groups we explored during the attendance discussion, first taking a look at economic status. The rates or the movement in these rates were similar for each group. Economically disadvantaged students saw a rate of forty-one point eight percent chronic absenteeism, where none economically disadvantaged students saw a rate of seventeen point two percent. Both groups did improve, and the rate, the gap between rates narrowed just slightly. The difference in chronic absenteeism for English learners versus non-English learners is very small. Attendance rates for English learner students have historically been slightly better than that for non-English learners, and are trending toward the pre-pandemic rates. Chronic absenteeism among homeless students is consistently higher than any other non, is higher than non-homeless students by about twenty-eight percentage points each year. Homeless students have the highest chronic absenteeism rate for all subgroups, coming in this year at sixty point one percent. Chronic absenteeism for students with disabilities, that is also consistently higher than those without disabilities by about ten percentage points each year. The gap from year to year, the change from year to year, students with disabilities saw an improvement of eight point three percentage points. Students without disabilities saw an improvement of seven point seven improvement points. So they really, students with disabilities made up a little more ground this year than students without disabilities. Then we noted earlier that attendance rates improved among all racial, ethnic categories. This slide shows the natural corollary. With attendance improving, chronic absenteeism continues to decline among each group. All groups remain above pre-pandemic levels, but continue to move in the right direction. I gave you two measures of chronic, of absentee, or attendance measurement this year. I gave you two measures of chronic or absentee or attendance measurement this year. We talked about chronic absenteeism and attendance rates. This last slide is meant to consider those groups of students based on individual attendance, thus comparing the attendance rates of students who are chronically absent with those who are not chronically absent. Again, 30.8% of students were chronically absent in school year '23. So as you would expect, those that were chronically absent have a lower overall attendance rate of 78.8%, while those who are not chronically absent have a higher overall attendance rate of 95.5%. Not a big surprise, but again, looking at those two measures together gives you a little bit more context to think about. So with that, I know the numbers were not exciting. I thank you for listening, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Chapman, who will talk about the highlights for student supports.
Thanks, Tom. The balance of the presentation today will share MDE's historical efforts to support attendance and engagement, our expanded learning here at MDE, and our next steps to support the field with research-based strategies to promote improved attendance. Before we share specific to student supports, it is important to reiterate the points Mr. Hile highlighted. The overall attendance rate has increased since last year. Again, we want to note, 88.8% to 90.5% further acknowledging the decrease for Michigan in chronic absenteeism from 38.5% in '21-'22 to 30.8% in '22-'23. However, there is still a need to close the gap. Local education agencies, including intermediate school districts, both in-state and nationally, have faced the challenge of chronic absenteeism pre-pandemic. Factors associated therewith, such as mental health issues and the supports that are needed there, as very well presented this morning by Dr. Golzinski and Mr. Hutchins, also factors specific to youth providing care for younger siblings and helping out more during the pandemic, and unfortunately, an extended or some extension of levels of disengagement. These factors were not created by the pandemic but were exacerbated. What we will share now are some specific supports historically that we have been focusing on here at the department. Using a three-pronged approach, we will highlight MYMTSS, or Michigan's Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, and EWIMS, Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring Systems. And finally, historically, we have been engaged with and collaborating with Attendance Works, which has become a national project initiative that utilizes action research methodology to assist school districts across the nation in addressing the prevalence of chronic absenteeism. As a nonprofit initiative, Attendance Works collaborates with schools, districts, states, communities, and organizations to ensure that everyone recognizes the chronic absence is a serious issue that can be addressed using a positive, problem-solving approach grounded in an understanding of educational inequities. In the upcoming slides, we will review each of these historical efforts and their intended Starting with MYMTSS, or Michigan's Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, it is a responsive framework that provides research-based instruction, interventions, and supports intended to meet the needs and assets of the whole child. The five essential components, as you'll see noted here on the screen for MTSS are team-based leadership, tiered delivery systems, selection and implementation of instruction, interventions and supports, comprehensive screening and assessment systems, and continuous database decision-making. Implementation of these five essential components of MTSS, as intended, provides educational settings with a framework to organize the strategies and processes needed to eliminate barriers to learning and support successful student outcomes, including attendance and behavior. It is important to note that Michigan's Multi-Tierred System of Supports, or MYMTSS, its Technical Assistance Center, is a state and federally funded project of MDE's that helps intermediate and local school districts implement and sustain a multi-tiered system of support in their schools to improve student outcomes in both behavior and learning. Secondly, we would like to share and highlight EWIMS. As a part of a secondary school's multi-tiered system of support framework, the Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System, or EWIMS, can help educators systematically identify students who are showing signs that they are at risk of dropping out of school and make decisions about supports and interventions to help students get back on track or move in the right direction for graduation. At Tier One schools, at Tier One, schools implement evidence-based practices to support attendance, positive social, emotional, and behavioral well-being, and high course performance for all learners. As you see noted, the triangle here on the screen, those are the three areas of focus or highlights when implementing EWIMS. MDE continues to expand the number of EWIMS trainers statewide. There are four EWIMS lead trainers who are responsible for training new cohorts of trainers. So this is definitely a train-the-trainer model. Within the first two cohorts here at MDE, 12 EWIMS statewide trainers were trained. These individuals provide district facilitator training and coaches and coaching to schools and districts around the state who are taking the initiative at the local level to implement And here we will share just a little bit more regarding Attendance Work, the national organization referenced at the opening of this segment, this part of the presentation. Utilizing EWIMS with the MTSS framework, schools identify students in need of support due to attendance. Due to the support of Attendance Works and the Student Engagement and Attendance Center, MDE has learned specific strategies and interventions to support improved attendance of students. You'll note that those tiers are shared and explained on the screen here. Tier One are those strategies aimed at encouraging better attendance for all students and at preventing absenteeism before it affects achievement. So this would be universal supports. Some examples would be clearing concise, consistent communication about schedules and expectations in the learning environment, routine rituals and celebrations related to attendance and engagement, along with personalized positive communication to families when students are absent. Tier Two, those would be interventions designed to remove barriers to attendance for students at greater risk of chronic absenteeism. These students and their families often receive personalized attention as part of an engagement strategy. Some examples for Tier Two would include individualized student success plans that includes attention to attendance, attendance strategies that may be embedded and/or added to an IEP, family visits, an assigned mentor, and external peer group connections for both the student and the parent or caregiver. And then finally, with Tier Three, those would be intense supports or interventions to support students missing the most school often, involving not just schools but other agencies such as Health, Housing, and Social Services. Tier Three is definitely the tier where there is the most intensive support. And so now, what have we done as a department? What have we taken the initiative to do internally so that we may outwardly support in the field? Over the past 19 months, MDE has participated in a federal community of practice, or what we commonly call a COP, led by the U.S. Ed Office of Elementary and Secondary Education and CAC, or the Student Engagement and Attendance Center. Through virtual learning series, state education agencies focused on strategies to address the many facets of chronic absenteeism. What we did learn as a team here at MDE, the first series was focused on building systemic supports for better attendance, focusing on issues of chronic absenteeism and student engagement as they intersect with the three topics, two of which we've shared today, multi-tiered systems of support, youth and family engagement, along with truancy. The second series focused on recognizing underserved populations to support attendance and engagement, and the most recent series, which I had the opportunity to be a participant of, focused on overcoming data challenges to address chronic absenteeism. This learning has deepened our understanding of a statewide systemic approach to addressing chronic absenteeism. In particular, we intend to expand our efforts to provide support to LEAs specific to student engagement. In alignment with the three-pronged approach presented today, we also are better informed on implementing data-driven and research-based strategies to support improvement. Our next steps include three immediate actions, including, first, enhancing Michigan's MTSS and EWIMS efforts and strategies to support attendance and engagement within LEAs. Secondly, expand MDE's current graduation rate guidance document to include an addition for both elementary and middle school students. And last, but certainly not least, establish a cross-office attendance and engagement team with a pursuit to expand upon MDE's current accelerated learning-through-student-engagement brief document that provides additional strategies for research-based strategies and provides capacity for schools to improve attendance, reduce chronic absenteeism, and ultimately prevent truancy. So we would like to say thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rice, for this opportunity, and if there are any questions, we will entertain them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and to Hile. You know, one person's opportunity is another person's burden, so we appreciate you looking at it as an opportunity. Board members, Dr. Robinson and Mr. Bullock.
So I empathize with you when you were talking about the limitations of the definitions of chronic absenteeism. I have two students in one of my classes right now with the same number of absences after four weeks. One of them has been contacting me each time she's absent, asking for notes, checking in with a friend to take notes, zooming in at times. The other student I've contacted multiple times, haven't heard anything about. Those are radically different kinds of absenteeism. So I wonder how useful this USED definition really is for us, about, you know, 10%. It seems like a metric that doesn't have the meaning we think it actually has at times, right? I'm wondering what factors are causing absenteeism. I just jotted down a few that I thought about, physical, mental, or chronic illnesses, homelessness, just generic truancy, as you know, as we understand the term, or students that are just not engaged and don't feel connected to their school community, so they just have kind of dropped out without going through the process of dropping out. And I'm wondering what problems we're trying to address here with those things in mind. I'm also wondering, are there kids in school who are coming to school more than 90% of the time but are not engaged and are having some of the same problems that the kids who are not in school are having? And are we finding them as well as we're finding the students who are not in school? I'm also thinking about our students. I read the definition at the beginning that kids who are in virtual schools but are there for more than half of the time checked in are considered there, but I wonder about students, I think, anyone who taught during COVID experienced students who logged into Zoom but never turned on the camera, never participated in the class, and we didn't really know if they were there or not. And I'm wondering if students enrolled at our virtual schools but not participating, not putting on cameras, not raising their hands, answering questions, handing in work, are they, they're considered attending at this point, as long as they are logged into a system, but are they really engaged? So I just think there's a quantity versus quality issue here that I appreciate that you brought up in your preamble about, I'm not sure that, you know, this kid with 161 absences is better off than the kid with 162, but I don't, I guess it's, there's kind of a question buried in there. I don't have a solution for it, but it doesn't seem like this definition is really getting us what we want to get.
Definition is rigid to answer your rhetorical question. It is rigid. It's toggle switch to your way of describing it, to our way of discussing it. It doesn't really get at what a child experiences. A disengaged kid who's there 95% of the time is not better off than an engaged child who is sick a portion of the time, but nonetheless manages to keep pace with his or her studies, and, and, and. To your fairly comprehensive list, I would add childcare. Let some of our older children take care of their younger siblings. Mr. Bullock and then Ms. Jackson.
I have a barrage of questions, but they're strictly curiosity. However, they may open a little Pandora's Box, but they're actually tied to a lot of what Mitch asked. I first started with the, are these numbers post-pandemic only, or do they kind of carry through?
So the numbers are post-pandemic in terms of the 23 school year rates, but we do measure this annually, so every year we'll update this with the latest measure.
Yeah, because he talked about virtual schools or schools that do the hybrid stuff. And so, again, disparities, share the Michigan legislative blackout, lots of communities don't have Wi-Fi, or, and even if the school gave them a device, they gotta go over grandma's house to even be able to use the Wi-Fi because hotspots weren't given out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know how we gauge that. With the attendance rate by all these categories, the first one I wanted to talk about is, I didn't see one on gender status. I don't know if that's taboo at this point, or...
It's not taboo. I did not bring that data with me, but I can certainly pull it up.
Okay. And then the homelessness one, I wanted to know, do we have a breakdown versus traditional homelessness versus non-traditional, which in my world is the couch surfer. I live over Aunt Joan's house this week. I'm over Cousin Mike's house next week. I don't have a home, but I'm not in the street homeless.
It's comprehensive definition of homelessness includes both categories, as long as they're reported to the district and the district is able to report it to the state.
Based on, based on federal McKinney Ventor.
And like, yeah, and so then I got into a whole bunch of other stuff in my head. Mitch kind of touched on, like, what are the, well, we discussed the interventions, but like, are there consequences to this? Like, are we, at some point, are we expelling kids or, you know, if they're chronically Is there a consequence to that, or are we just allowing them to float? Depending on the district, probably. And are there, are we like encouraging in-school sanctions, inter-school disciplinary actions? And one of the examples we talked, you talked about the 162 versus 163, like, I'm probably the kid that probably missed, only came to school 150 days, but was still on the honor roll, right? So the guy who missed, came every day, got set back a year, you know what I mean?
You don't measure the qualitative aspects.
So, yeah, like GPAs or, like, do we rate all that stuff? Like, who, not only the absentees, but what are their GPAs? What is their, you know, do, does that match up with the socioeconomic status or the childcare or the parent issues? I don't know what, are we doing a comprehensive in each district? What, are we doing a comprehensive in each district or at each school? Again, they were just questions of curiosity.
So the data that's gathered at the state level is data that is required by either state or federal statute, and that is per Michigan law. So your curiosities about, I think, the extra demographic variables, learning variables, attributes of a student do not enter into this computation. So frankly, our hands are tied in terms of what we can gather at the state of Michigan by state and federal rule.
But does it prevent us from gathering it? Or does it just say, this is all we have to do? So do we go above and beyond?
It prevents what we are allowed to require school districts to provide to the state. The law precludes us for gathering additional data.
I'm gonna marinate on that for a while.
Yep.
Yeah, and of course, you know, you may marinate a different way than Mr. McMillan marinates on it. But one way or the other, you know, it's an interesting line, because we do, in many districts, reach out to children and try to peel back why, you know, little Mikey isn't in school. And we try to support in different ways. We try to cut slack in different ways. You heard us in this morning when Dr. Golzinski and Mr. Hutchins were talking about children who were, who are periodically absent, you know, what do we do in those circumstances? Sometimes that's an issue, and there are consequences associated with it. Sometimes it's an issue, and we're supportive of them being absent because they need to be absent for some extenuating circumstance, or some greater circumstance than being in school. So a lot of this is art, not science.
Yeah.
It's sifting through the individual circumstance. I see Dr. Pritchett nodding. She's been there for decades, and she understands.
And like I said, like, I know I could miss all those days and still, like, I have an example of siblings all in the same school, all missing the same days, but the youngest was, you know, like, when you call in the house, they're like, she's not paying attention. She's not, so now they think she got ADHD, now they want the ISP, go through all of that. So wasted six months, and they finally just tested her, and she tested it too. So often, they had to upper her grade, but she's like uninterested in two plus two. So, yeah, so...
There is some, there is some research that suggests that disengagement is bad for attendance, particularly as you get older and you have literal or figurative wheels.
Yeah. Yeah, and I know that's an exception to the rule, but, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Jackson, you're up next, and then Ms. Snyder.
So I guess I'm kind of like Mr. Bullock. I don't necessarily have a question, just more amusing. Thinking about like what Mr. Robinson said about, you know, you may have one student who is out, but they have a reason, and another student who's out who does not. And then I think about the district that I work in and the district that I live in. For my students, there's no way for me to excuse an absence. You're either here or you're not. There's no excused absence. There's no doctor's appointment where if my child that lives in my house is absent, I can call the school and say, well, Jacob has a doctor's appointment. So I've always wondered, why is there a difference there? But then the other thing that I wonder about, and that many people have asked me to ask if I ever get the opportunity here, is for Detroit Public Schools, our attendance is defaulted to absent, which means that when I log in, all of my students are marked absent unless I mark them present, where in most districts, if you don't mark that student absent, they're assumed to be present, which seems like it can inaccurately penalize students and districts and...
And, uh...
You know, regions unfairly, because, you know, what if I get busy and I don't get to go back in and mark Bobby here? He is defaulted to absent, where most everywhere else, he's defaulted to present. So I just wonder why that is.
I think you may have answered your own question, given the fact that you've noted that in other districts, it's not that way. But in your district, it is. My hunch is that's a conversation to ask Dr. Viti.
Yeah, that might be.
Because if other districts can do it differently, there's no barrier to Detroit Public being able to do it differently as well. If it's simply a technological issue, a technological issue can be addressed by a programmer. And so you might want to ask that question within the, within the district. Or not. It's as you choose.
That's a question for me and my household when, so when my kids were, I got the texts that they were absent, especially during COVID. And so I'd walk in my son's or my daughter's room and say, you're marked absent, but they're actually on, but because of default, I didn't know it defaulted to absent versus, okay. They'd be like, I'm on. What's the problem?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Snyder.
So I, I mean, I'm gonna push back on the idea that it's not, that it's an art and not a science. There's quite a bit of data available. The questions that you've posed, Mitchell, make sense for, you know, pre-pandemic absenteeism, but it doubled and has not actually returned or gotten significantly better. And I looked up the reference you're using here for Attendance Works, and it says, you know, the executive director of Attendance Works says she hasn't seen the kind of recovery she'd hoped for. I think people have a little bit of, are they're under the false impression that when COVID became more endemic, that that would then result in a significant improvement in attendance, and I'm not seeing that. So there's quite a bit of information out here that even the people you guys are using is saying, okay, no, that it hasn't actually gotten better, even if it's slightly better, if you will. Because we started out with about 15% as absenteeism, and it doubled. So that's like 30%. That's significant. And then when you ask, okay, what's the outcome of that? What happens? Well, the most important factor in considering dropping out is absenteeism. So it's not even just GPA. It's, we just lose these kids altogether is really what ends up happening, and the data shows that. I mean, I don't think we come close to solving that problem or really addressing it without speaking that truth out loud and acknowledging it, instead of making it softer and saying, well, it's improved. But no, it hasn't improved to the extent that we need it to improve. And when you translate it to the outcome of kids dropping out, that it's much more serious than, than we're kind of sitting here and talking about.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Other, Ms. Lipton and then Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you very much, presenters. This, for me, could not have come at a better time because I have been really digging very deeply into a model known as the Full Service Community School Model. And I recently attended a webinar put on by the National Centers for Community Schools where the founder of Attendance Work was one of the, one of the presenters. I apologize, I'm forgetting her name. I see her face, but I can't recall her name. In any event, the topic of the webinar, and I received the recording of it, is, was actually the positive effect of the Full Service Community School Model on chronic absenteeism. And I would be happy to share the webinar and the slides with you. I'm not going to suggest that there is any easy answer, but I've been very taken and was very impressed by their research in the positive effect of the community service model on a school district's success in all measures of academic outcomes, including the reduction in, significant reduction in chronic absenteeism. And it was confirmed by the founder of Attendance Works. She acknowledged that the model had a significant effect on these buildings that were using the Full Service Community Schools model, in addition to other positive outcomes for children. Because obviously, as it's already been discussed, you can measure things, but really...
Hello? Hi.
I think that the importance in chronic absenteeism as a measure, at least as, at least as I understand it, is that it can often be a canary in the coalmine, if you will, measure, particularly in our most vulnerable school districts. And by then embracing the principles of the Full Service Community Schools model, you can oftentimes use your community school coordinators to understand why, why the child is chronically absent. And that may uncover, for example, lack of laundry facilities in the home, so that the child doesn't have clean clothes, or lack of transportation, or lack of these other things. So it's an important measure, I think, for a broader range as opposed to just using it as a measure of the student wasn't in school these days. So that's an important point. When you talk about, so that's just sort of, that's just sort of setting the stage. When you talk about, on slide number 30, about enhancing the EWMS and, what, what do you, how do you pronounce M-MIMIT?
MyMTSS.
Oh, okay, you don't... Okay, so, MyMTSS and EWMS. You talk about enhancing those efforts to support attendance. Would the inclusion of Full Service Community School model tenants be one of those enhancements? I brought one of these books for every board member because it's just a fascinating case study on districts not in Michigan that have used the Full Service Community School model. Would that be an enhancement, or are there other things that, when you say enhanced efforts to support attendance? The reason why I bring that up is because one of the pitches that this woman from Attendance Works made on the webinar is that, yes, she believes that the Full Service Community Schools model can be very effective in not just reducing chronic absenteeism in the numbers, but actually increasing student achievement, increasing high school graduation rates, college attainment, all of the things that we're trying to do, particularly in our most vulnerable communities, which is where we placed our promise zones. So I just wanted to know, is that something that the department would contemplate?
It is not something that we have been involved in, but it's a model or framework which, depending on the LEA and if it works for a particular LEA, and that's the real, another important tenet to this conversation, each and every LEA, each and every community is unique. So there needs to be a vast majority of options and opportunities as LEAs and ISDs are very intentionally looking at absenteeism intervention. So it likely could be an option, depending on the needs of an individual LEA.
And so, oh, I'm sorry, and just to follow up with that. So I do think that the ability of the department to review that data is important, because, like you said, it may not be appropriate for a community. They may not have a problem and may not need to make any changes. What's really, really interesting about this webinar and the work of the National Center for Community Schools, which has been studying this for maybe 40 years, is that it has the most positive impact. It's not that the model would not be helpful in any district, but they have found it to be particularly helpful in the most vulnerable school districts, most economically disadvantaged school districts, which I found very compelling, because I think that a lot of us around the table do spend a lot of time worrying about our most vulnerable students. And so it is really, it was really, really, very, very compelling data that the organization has shared. One last question. So the Michigan's multi-tiered system of supports, I just want to make sure that I understand, and the EWMS, is, does a district enter that? Or is that something that the department imposes on the district? In other words, which way is the information flowing, and then the information back to the district through that?
Sure. The department, in partnership with the MyMTSS Technical Assistance Center, we provide guidance, we provide professional learning to leaders and educators within districts. And so districts, again, depending on what is the need for the district and/or the school community, they choose to implement either MyMTSS or EWMS, or a combination of the two.
Okay, so I just, so what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So districts have certain, certain things that they have to disclose to the department as through their continuation, continuous improvement plan? And just certain information that...
Not necessarily disclose, but we make available opportunities for the support, for the intervention by way of written communication to the field, through our online servicing, which has a vast amount of resources in this area or around this topic in terms of student support and intervention. And so, once that information is communicated out, districts then have the opportunity, through the guidance documents, through professional learning that's provided, and many times that's in collaboration with additional educational organizations. So the district chooses what is going to be a best-fit scenario to implement in their district.
Right. No, no, that part, that part makes sense. I just want to be clear that, like a, for instance, okay, so the data on attendance is submitted by the LEA to the department. Let's just use that metric. And then the department, given that information, will then correspond back to the district. Danger, Will Robinson, you have a problem. And these are the things that you can do to correct your problem, if you so choose. Is that...
There is no, there is no notification to a district of a specific problem around attendance for that district. Districts are encouraged as they prepare for looking at data through the MyKid process, through myschoolddata.org. So the data is made available, and districts are aware. And SEPI shares and puts out a report where it's communicated to all of the districts what their attendance rates are. So there is a formal report that goes out. Tom, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, I think in addition, it's part of the school report card. So it's one of the measures the department uses, one of many measures used to gauge the performance of a school and a school district. So more in the school end of that conversation, attendance becomes relevant and important in that continuum. So there's quite a few measures used, but that is one of the measures that helps inform the Michigan School Report Card.
So the system is sort of a self-help system. You disclose, you go through this process, you sort of, you sort of decide what you need, and here is the menu of things that we can help you with. Okay. And that's because we're a local control state, and we don't tell... And that's because we're a local control state and we don't tell districts what to do, but we sort of ask them to engage in self-help, if you will.
Well, and because the children and the families and the staff are all at the local level.
And that's why I think this full-service community schools model is really very, very powerful.
I, I agree with you, there's no doubt. You and I have talked about this, and communities and schools is outstanding.
But, 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 yes, community in schools is outstanding.
And community schools as well.
And, and, yes, so, um, I just wanted to make sure I understood the flow of information. So that was very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other, Dr. Pritchett?
Um, very quickly, thank you for sharing the numbers. I guess a couple of observations that have really been made by my colleagues here. But first of all, on the chronic absentee number, I, I appreciate, Mr. Howell, that you said, you know, we can go, here, we're not chronically absent, and one more absence, we're chronically absent. I think the other thing we need to understand is all of those absences could have been excused. So this is not the excused/unexcused issue, um, that sometimes occurs because that then goes back to the local district. Uh, local districts may be reacting to a student who has missed ten days unexcused. That doesn't even kick into the chronically absent. They may have, um, certain interventions that they're using at that point. So I just wanted us to, you know, kind of keep that in mind. That the local control part of it will also drive the truancy issue, which I've seen. Um, one district may react more quickly to students who are missing school, and it can be students who are getting excused absences, uh, and have an intervention with truancy coming in versus another school district right next door who may not react that quickly to the truancy. So, um, we need to keep that, um, again, kind of in our, our thought processes when thinking about absences. Uh, we know that children, students do better if they're in school, there's no question about it. I think this data tells me anyways. We're moving in the right direction, but we're certainly not where we need to be. Um, I'm not sure we were, where we needed to be prior to the pandemic hitting. Um, and we're, you know, again, I'm, I'm pleased to see the numbers are moving in the positive, but certainly, we need to keep working at it. And I, you know, trust that the locals are, and are trying to encourage those students, especially the ones who they've not seen, uh, for a period of time, to get back to school, whatever that's going to take. It's a community issue, it is extremely complex. Uh, family issues, motivation of the student, the high school kid who walks in the front door, mom and dad have done their bit, they've dropped him off for the day, or her, uh, and they go out the back door because they're seventeen years old, and that's what happens in, in big schools. So, um, you know, those are not excuses, those are the realities that schools are dealing with. And I, and I know they're working, and I appreciate the department, um, assisting them with that when they reach out.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any other board members who would care to share? Dr. Pew?
Just a question, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but, um, have we seen our homeless rates change, um, between any of these years?
Yep, yes, we have.
I don't know if that was in there. I mean, I saw the rates for absenteeism and?
And attendance.
And attendance, but I didn't see the number of?
Nine is the trend.
No, but I think she's asking not about the attendance rate of, of the homeless, but the percentage of homeless.
Students. Apologize if I did not bring that with me, but I can follow up and send that to you.
Okay, that, that would be interesting to see. And, um, I've gotten a lot of media calls about our chronic absenteeism rates because, uh, you know, a report that went out, um, looking at prior numbers, um, pre and post pandemic, and where Michigan fell across the country. And what I really emphasized was that we can't look at that rate, that statistic, without looking at our statistics around Michigan being at the bottom of the fifty states for how we fund, um, how our fu- schools are fun- funded equitable, uh, funding, uh, in the state, but also how, um, our building infrastructure. You know, how Michigan does not fund, uh, buildings. And all of these conversations that we've had thus far today, the presentations, they all tie in together, and I think that that was the point. Uh, I think everyone brought a piece of that here. Um, we can't look at absenteeism rates without looking at, um, things like asthma, a leading cause of, of absenteeism, and, uh, thinking about our school buildings. I think about, um, a home. Would you want to go to a home where the roof is leaking? Where there are rodents, you know, in the schools? Where the temperature conditions, you don't have heat, uh, in the winter and air in the summer? And many of our children are still, uh, facing that, uh, let alone, um, other conditions that we could talk about that are health-related, um, that are further impacted by, by the environment. Uh, we could also look at the social, mental health of, you know, children as well as, as family members. And so, all of these things have to be looked at collectively, um, to a board member Bullock's point. Uh, we, we also see the cumulative impacts of, of all of these things. And so, um, looking at our chronic absenteeism rates without looking at those drivers, um, it's hard to do.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Um, Mr. Howell, slide five. Daywide attendance rate. Did it go up or down?
The attendance rate?
Yes.
Uh, the attendance rate has increased to ninety point five percent from last school year.
Right.
So we're still below where we want to be, but that's where we're at.
My question is, did it, did it increase from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And, um, the absence of attendance, the, the opposite of attendance is what?
Absence.
Right. Is it, is it chronic absence?
Chronic absenteeism.
Chronic absenteeism is important, but it's not the, the opposite of attendance.
No, it's not, they're not the same measure.
They're, they're not, they're not flip sides of a single coin. Okay, very good. Um, on slide seven. The attendance rate by economic status. Which came back more substantially, the attendance rate for poor children or, uh, for economically disadvantaged children or for non-economically disadvantaged children?
So, um, the economically disadvantaged students increased the rate, um, let's see, the gap? Is that, you're talking about closing the gap? They closed the gap from six point one percentage points to five point three. So they came back stronger than non-economically disadvantaged.
The more vulnerable population came back more strongly.
They did.
Okay, and with respect to slide nine. Homeless, uh, students, uh, attendance rate by homeless status, homeless versus non-homeless.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which came back more strongly? The attendance rate for homeless or the attendance rate for non-homeless?
Uh, homeless gap closed, so the homeless returned rate or increased rate was larger than that of non-homeless students.
So the vulnerable population increased more.
Increased at a faster rate.
There you go. And right underneath that, the attendance rate by special education status, did the attendance rate for students with disabilities, um, grow more substantially than students without disabilities, or vice versa?
Well, it was very close, but it appears that the, the students that receive an IEP or have special ed services did improve slightly better than those without.
Again, the vulnerable population grew more substantially than did the non-vulnerable population.
That's correct.
Um, on, uh, on slide fifteen, chronic absenteeism. Uh, chronic absenteeism from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three did what? It in- it increased or decreased?
The chronic absenteeism rate went down.
That's right, and that's the percentage?
But it was better in two thousand twenty-one than it was in two thousand twenty-three. So it's come down from two thousand twenty-two, but we're still behind.
Understood, yeah. So we are still working on, uh, getting back to pre-pandemic levels. We've improved over the preceding year.
We have.
Okay. So to the, to the, um, to the sharing of Ms. Jackson, Dr. Pritchett, and Dr. Robinson. Physical health issues cause absences or could cause absences. Mental health app, mental health issues, older siblings taking care of younger siblings, jobs, um, can be a reason for children to not, not make school disengagement or boredom, and transportation are wrong, among many other factors. If you call a, a family up and the child is not in school because of a physical health issue, you have to peel back whether the child still should be in school notwithstanding the physical health issue, or that he or she really properly belongs at home. The same is true for a mental health issue. For that matter, the same is true for a child with a job, and, and, and. So I think a lot of this is more complicated than either you belong in school or you don't belong in school. I think it takes some measure of discretion and care and experience on the part of the educator. Very much appreciate your presentation, thank you so much. It was, as always, very much elucidating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, the time is now three nineteen. Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on the proposed disciplinary literacy standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school content area teachers. This proposal is presented to the State Board of Education for the revision and adoption of new standards for the preparation of middle grades, grades five through nine, and high school, grade seven through twelve, content area teachers. These standards would replace Michigan's two thousand two certification standard for the preparation of all secondary teachers in reading instruction. This presentation will be followed by a period of public comment and requests for approval at the January meeting. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Elsa Chapman, backed by popular demand, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of Educator, Student and School Support, Dr. Sean Kocke, Manager of the Educator Preparation Unit, Dr. Alam Bazi, Educational Consultant in the Officer, in the Office of Educator Excellence. This is a brief informational presentation, no board action is required at this time. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And again, good afternoon, board. As shared, we are here today to share the proposed disciplinary literacy standards for the preparation of middle grades and high school content area teachers. Dr. Kocke will share some opening and clarifying specifics as to the why of disciplinary literacy. Dr. Alam Bazi will share the collaborative process and elements for developing the proposed standards along with next steps. Dr. Kocke?
Thank you. Uh, just one brief word at the beginning to give you a sense of what we're talking about. We talk about the disciplinary literacy standards. We're talking about standards that guide coursework that all secondary teachers, uh, are to take in the area of reading instruction, um, which is mandated by, uh, Michigan Capable Law and our administrative rules. These are not standards for literacy specialists, for example, or reading specialists or teachers whose primary job is the teaching of reading, but rather are teachers across content areas, uh, what they need to do, know, and be able to do to support students' disciplinary literacy. And Dr. Bazi, she'll lead you through the rest.
Thank you, Dr. Kocke. Well, why the literacy, disciplinary literacy standards? The disciplinary literacy standards continue the work accomplished in the pre-K three and three-six literacy standard, literacy standards that was also emphasized in the ELA standards for the grades five-nine, seven-twelve, grade-level bands. Replacing the standards for reading instruction for secondary teachers from two thousand two, the disciplinary literacy standards focus on how literacy is developed within each of the disciplines. Beyond decoding skills, students need to continue learning how to read, especially adolescents must read in order to learn. The General Education Leadership Networks and ILA's recent standards have served as foundational documents, forming the basis and giving us the continuity amongst the standard sets that have been worked on recently. Looking at our strategic plan goals, these proposed literacy standards align to, uh, support goals four and five, and that increased literacy development in disciplines where students think, write, and communicate like a scientist, historian, mathematician, reinforces learning in the disciplines. This in turn expands adolescents' post-secondary horizons and sets them up to better achieve in sciences and fields that are formally inaccessible to them. For goal seven, we oper- operationalize, uh, this goal as increasing the quantity, quality, and diversity of the teaching workforce. These standards focus on increasing the quality of teachers by increasing the capacity of teachers within their disciplines. Who participated in the process? Literacy coaches, content area teachers, and district specialists, including those with expertise in remediating dyslexia, were among the standards committee. Educators representing various regions, including the UP, as well as national literacy leaders, contribute to the standards development and review process. The recommendations of the standards committee, after they reviewed the current content area reading standards, is that those currently in place are inadequate, and they chose to develop new standards. Working collaboratively, members developed the draft disciplinary literacy standards grounded in evidence-based practices, building on the recently developed MDE literacy standards. The committee's objective is that regardless of the content area, every teacher supports adolescent's access to the knowledge, and more importantly, the ways of thinking, reading, and writing that go along with an acting knowledge. Knowledge specific to the discipline and the approaches that are specifically relevant to adolescent learners. In addition to knowing concepts and components of literacy, teachers proficiency in the how require statements to be performance-based. That is what is specific to these draft literacy standards. So the shifts that you see on your screen from the current standards is that current standards focus on reading across content areas. The proposed standards also do this, with reading being a core component of literacy with direct relationships to writing, listening, speaking, and viewing. Whereas the current standards denote reading's purpose is for gathering information, the proposed standards explicitly name, describe, and model the disposition, strategies, and patterns of thinking typical for that discipline. Typical for science, typical for math, typical for social studies, and you get the idea. The proposed standards elevate expectations for teachers, and in fact, the preparation of teachers will aid them to practice the concept as well as have knowledge of them. So that shift that we just, uh, looked at resulted in an emphasis that led to twenty-three standards organized around these four core domains you see on your screen. And the timeline reflects the work began just before I joined MDE. A huge shout-out to our colleague, Holly Brothers, who couldn't be here today, who launched the project under the guidance and leadership of Dr. Kocke. With several rounds of feedback, here we are today, a couple of years later. So what are our next steps? After presenting to you today, these will go for public comment. And by February, before we come back, looking for your approval, we will have reana- received and analyzed the public comments and present them to you. And thereafter, with your approval, between two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, we will provide the technical assistance. assistance and program revisions that need to take place across EPPs.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that presentation, both for its content and its brevity. Board members, questions? We may be getting to presentations fatigue.
I just want to make clear, you know, Chairman, you said no board action required, but as I say, I think regularly when these standards come before us, which standards are one of the few things that I think we have a direct impact, we elect a superintendent, we approve standards. So those are kind of the two main areas that we do, there could be board action, right? I mean, we could, I suppose, vote and say, we have concerns, send it back and bring it back to us next month. Here are the areas we want you to fix or that we would suggest. I mean, there could be a back and forth, right? I mean, maybe-
We, this is part of the back and forth.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't, that timeline could be interrupted by the board here as saying, we're uncomfortable with it going out as it is. We'd like, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, not that I have any particular concerns, although I will ask, when dealing with literacy, I think it was last month or two months ago, oh, Tiffany's not here, but there were expressed concerns about phonics or lack of phonics and was it Lucy Cocken, Lucy Cockens and all, you know, that, and I heard decoding in the presentation, is that, you know, it seems like that shift in science, science has changed, but that shift or towards phonics, is that incorporated in these standards?
That's a great question. Knowledge of the, let's see if I can say this best, the knowledge of the developmental reading progressions, the way it develops in children is an important part of this. The content area teacher who's prepared under these standards would not be expected to, say, take a student who is unable to decode at the secondary level and then teach them to decode.
Right.
But would be able to recognize signs that a child is struggling with reading and refer them to the additional supports that they need to have that more intensive support. So it's not, these are not the specialists in the teaching of reading, they're specialists in other content areas, but nevertheless, they have to have an awareness of reading disabilities.
Okay. And are these aligned in any way to Common Core standards?
Well, Common Core standards are the, form the basis of our K-12 ELA standards. Our teachers need to understand what the board-approved state standards are for ELA and other content areas. This is not so much about the content mastery as it is about understanding reading.
As I understood, Common Core had like throughout the whole, all disciplines, all subjects, it was kind of, it talked about, you know, literacy and reading was part of it, it was kind of-
Yes, that is, yes, that is included. The Common Core standards are not the exclusive domain of the teacher of English-like jarts to act.
Thank you. And that's really the premise behind these standards, that we all have some stake, some input to be made in the teaching of literacy, whether we are expressly literacy teachers or not. And the fact of the matter is, is that literacy goes well beyond decoding to the development of knowledge, the development of vocabulary, the development of fluency, all of which help to develop greater knowledge, greater knowledge, that it's not simply decoding. Decoding important, necessary, but not sufficient. Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
Will we be voting on these in December? Are you thinking that public comment will be open for the next 30 days?
The answer is, we will be voting on them. If we can talk through the timetable again, yeah?
Public comment will be opening, and the public comment will go through early December, and then we bring these back in February.
And when will public comment close?
We established the date of December 11th.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other questions? Going once, twice, thrice? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Thank you very much, presenters. We look forward to seeing you back in a few months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on today's agenda is the approval, the nominations of the Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC, and presentation of the 2022-2023 SEAC Annual Report. Each year, the State Board of Education is asked to approve nominations of the Special Education Advisory Committee. SEAC is seeking to fill the following vacancies: three delegates, five alternates, and two at-large members. In addition, the SEAC Annual Report will be shared. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Michelle Harmela, also backed by popular demand, Deputy Superintendent of Division of P-20 System and Student Transitions, Terry Rink, the Director of the Office of Special Education, and Terry Pettit, the SEAC Facilitator in the Office of Special Education. Following the presentation, the board is being asked to approve the nominations during today's meeting. There will be a brief PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. Terry, Terry, and Michelle.
Sorry, I couldn't find the mouse.
Most people are mouse averse.
I'm Terry Pettit, and I am the SEAC Facilitator, that's a Special Education Advisory Committee facilitator. I think I have known most of you, and many of you have come and spoken with SEAC, so it's good to see everyone today. Our presentation today is going to be twofold. First, I'm going to be presenting the annual report, which I am required to do in IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. I speak a lot in acronyms, so stop me if I miss something. So we'll do that first, and then we'll go into the approval of the nominated SEAC members for this year. I just wanted to quickly remind you that our, our mission statement is to promote positive outcomes for all Michigan students with disabilities. We have in membership this year our organizational delegates and alternates. We have 24 of them altogether that are voting members, and then 24 that are alternates. So that's quite a group of people. The organizations pick and choose their own people to bring to you, so we don't have any say in SEAC about who those people are. We ask them to just present us with whomever they want to represent their organizations. Next, we have defined members at large. We have eight of those, and they are all voting members. But I want to explain something. I'm going to bounce where it says Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B, and then the section number is there. The majority of the members on our panel must be individuals with disabilities or parents of children with disabilities. We call those defined members. And so you're going to hear me talking about defined members, and I want to make sure that that distinction is clear. So right now, we have one defined member in reserve that we are in need of, a member at large. And I believe this went out to you in a board brief, so if you have anyone that might be interested in that position, we're still looking for someone, and the application is at the end of our presentation, a link to it, so you could just have someone link there. But this person needs to be defined, so they have to be either a parent of a child with a disability or have a disability themselves. And we also have undefined members at large, and those, they just don't meet the criteria I just mentioned, and they are, three of those are non-voting. And Tiffany Tilly gave us someone that you'll see today that was in the packet of applications that has applied for one of those positions that we had open. We also have state agency delegates and alternates. Those are people that work either for MDE or DHHS or have some regular contact with special needs students. So you'll see that we have 13 ex-officios, they are non-voting people, and those all have alternates as well. So you put us all into one room together, and it's quite a group. We are, the majority is 51%, obviously, of defined members, and we are currently at 68%, which is a wonderful thing to have that extra padding there and to have that extra information coming from parents who are actually living what we talk about. We have six different functions that we are required to do in SEAC. The first three are right here. The first one is we advise regarding unmet needs. The second is that we comment publicly on proposed rules. The third is we advise regarding the state performance plan targets that are set by the Office of Special Education. The fourth is we advise regarding federal monitoring of any corrective action plans, and the really good news is we've had none of those in the last couple of years, so we have not had to work on those, and we're all grateful for that. Our fifth function is we advise regarding the development of policies related to the coordination of services for students with individual education programs, and primarily the Office of Special Ed is really instrumental in helping us with that function every month. And then the last function is we are to review due process hearing findings. Not that we're changing anything, but we want to learn more about how the law is being enacted and why. Our annual report for last year, this, that's what you have in front of you, we had two different priorities that we worked on throughout the year. We developed recommendations regarding high-quality professional learning, spotlighting of quality Tier One instruction, and the use of data for all Michigan students with disabilities. And the second priority was to provide input and feedback on developing monitoring activities and associated technical assistance resources, and specifically, we're talking about the least restrictive environment, and we're working on that very closely with the Office of Special Education. So those, everything that you find in the report is going to revolve around how those functions, those six functions came into play to help us meet our priorities, and you can see what our recommendations were in the report to the Michigan Department of Education. And all of that being said, we are now to, these are the nominees that have come to us to fill vacancies and their respective terms of service. You'll know, we do three-year service terms, so we expect somebody to be here for three years. However, somebody might move, or some situation arises that they're not able to fulfill their term, that's why you'll see a discrepancy. They're not all three-year terms on here. The ones that are shorter, they're being replaced, they're replacing somebody else that you had already voted in. So, Dr. Rice, would you like to have the honors of going through the nominations with the board?
You know what? I think the board has had these materials, and we will leave it to Mr. McMillan to ask questions about their individual backgrounds.
I'm counting on it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. McMillan to approve. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Bullock. Do we have any discussion associated therewith? Hearing none? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly may be with us on the phone. Are you there, Tiffany?
She can't vote on the phone.
She can't vote on the phone. Okay, I apologize.
I am here, though.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Presenters, thank you so much. Yes, please.
You said you were still looking for someone to fill a particular position, and you said someone who has a child with a disability would qualify?
They have a child with a disability and an IEP, an active individualized education program.
So someone whose child used to have an IEP who has now, has an adult child who exited the high school system?
Right. They would not qualify.
Okay.
It has to be an active IEP.
Thank you.
I have a question, too. Did you submit, the report you said you submitted with recommendations, do we have that?
That's in the annual report, and I believe you got that.
Did you send that?
In the agenda, in the memo?
Any other questions? Once, twice, thrice? Thank you very much, presenters.
Thank you.
We are now at that portion of the meeting where we receive the report of the President.
And I'll be really quick, and I'll give a longer report next month, but just so that we can keep things moving. But I do want to mention that coming up on October 18th is a presentation, it is a screening of, let me get the, sorry. It is the screening of the right to read, and it is on October 18th at 6:00 p.m. You can catch it virtually or in person, but there will be a screening and then a conversation, a community conversation afterwards. I just want to really quickly say that I was able to visit Kent County, go to the Kids' Food Basket, Kent Career Tech Center, and Grand Rapids Community College. I'll speak more about that later. This month also attended the Michigan Education Justice Coalition press event, which really emphasized the $4.5 billion bake sale, which really is focused on making sure that we're not losing sight of the dollars that our children still need in their school building and dollars that have been disinvested from our public education system across the state, and the fact that there are parent groups, educators who are calling on our legislature and our governor to do what's needed to fill those gaping holes. Was able to visit Umoja Village in Detroit, Umoja Debate League as well, and lots of questions around Detroit right to literacy, the $94 million, and how that task force is coming together. I know Dr. Rice will continue to have those conversations. I also want to bring to light a young man by the name of Riley Skiles from St. Charles Community Schools, and Riley had me and others to write a letter to him on his behalf, and what he is pushing for is a teacher wish list, and speaking to the lack of resources that teachers have at their discretion to be able to buy the needed supplies in the classroom. Again, circles right back to that $4.5 billion that's needed. I don't know if we'll get it through a bake sale, but, you know, we will continue to advocate, and it's so good to have young people that are advocating, but they shouldn't have to. And so as we have these conversations together, whether we're talking about mental health, whether we're talking about the physical health of children, or whether we're talking about making sure that our children are showing up at school, we know that we need to make sure that we have the resources as well, that are inside of those school buildings that attract those students as well as meet their needs. And so that is all that I will say for now. One more thing, I lied. One question that I have is how many meetings has MyLEAP had and how the Michigan Department of Education has been involved? I don't know that the State Board of Education has been involved, I have not, so if we could get a report out on that.
Sure. So there's not an enormous amount to report on to date. There have been a number of internal meetings. You may recall that the governor's executive order 2023-6, which he signed Tuesday, July 11th, was an executive order that affected seven departments in state government for associated with the creation of MyLEAP. MDE was not the sole department affected by MyLEAP. It was MDE, it was the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, which licenses space for young people, childcare spaces, pre-kindergarten spaces. It was the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, or LEO, which is responsible for, among- It was the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, which licenses space for young people, childcare spaces, pre-kindergarten spaces. It was the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, or LEO, which is responsible for, among other things, 60 by 30, the governor's 60 by 30 goal, 60% of our adults ages 25 through 64 with a degree by 2030. And then the Department of Treasury. And the Department of Treasury is responsible for, among many things, scholarships. So there were three offices in this new MILEP associated with four departments in an executive order that dealt with seven different state departments. There have been regular meetings that Michelle Richard from the governor's office has had with representatives from those four departments. We've been asked for different information about the affected portion of our department, the Office of Great Start, which is responsible itself for childcare, Head Start, Great Start Readiness Program, early childhood development, and out-of-school time care. And so there's been a lot of sharing with the OG from those affected departments. We certainly don't have much information as yet as to precisely what is going on. We don't know, we haven't heard an announcement of the new director, the space associated with the new department, or any other details. We have heard that the staff members affected will not be adversely affected relative to salary and benefits and accumulated leave and the like, but it's really quite small. Dr. Michelle Harmela is our representative or our liaison to the governor's office on this, given the fact that she is the deputy superintendent responsible for, among other things, the Office of Great Start.
So we're telling them like who we think should be over the?
No, we're responding to their information requests. And likewise, the other three departments are responding to their information requests. It's markedly more involved than meets the eye. But if you would like an update at the next state board meeting, we'd be happy to provide what we have at that time. It'll still be three weeks before December 1st, but we're happy to share what we have.
Share information that you're receiving, not?
Right. That's right. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Anything else on that? Thank you for the report of the board president, report of the state superintendent, three items. First yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and shout out to all those in our indigenous communities for whom the second Monday of the month has particular significance. Today, as a couple of us have mentioned, October 10th is World Mental Health Day, and I think we've underscored the importance of World Mental Health Day today. And then, not that I necessarily want to get into the weeds on this, but just a little bit of a note on school finance, that the increase in the per pupil foundation allowance over the last two years has gone from $8,700 to $9,608, $908 increase, approximately $450 a year. I remember Dr. Cornell, when you and I were superintendents, and we used to argue with state legislators at the time about the difference between a $50 per year increase and a $75 per year increase, because we argued that we just might be able to avoid cuts if the increase were $75 a year versus $50 a year. Now we're talking about $450 a year, but you don't catch up all at once. It takes a long time, Ms. Lipton, to catch up. The increase for economically disadvantaged students in fiscal year '22 was $512 million, Dr. Renee Garcia. And in fiscal year '24, this fiscal year, which just began a few days ago, Ms. Jackson, it went to $952 million, an 86% increase in two years. And Dr. Michelle Harmela, you may recall that when you were first as superintendent in Wayne Westland, that that number seemed perpetually stuck at $309 million over a period of years, almost like it had been super glued. We've had the increase for students with disabilities from $90 million in Section 51F funding to $336 million for students with disabilities, a 273% increase in the last two years. Not enough to fully fund students with disabilities, but nonetheless, big increases. And we appreciate those in the legislature in the last two years who have worked hard on that. We've increased the funding for English learners from $25 million to almost $40 million, a 58% increase. And we've increased for rural and isolated districts from $8 million in fiscal year '22 to almost $12 million in fiscal year '24, 38% increase. You know, sometimes we talk about the good old days. I remember the good old days. They were old. They weren't so good. We're going to turn to the report of the teacher of the year. Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on the report of the teachers of the year. Ms. Candace Jackson.
Can I ask a question about something before that on M?
Sure.
In the agenda, report on the approved changes to the Macomb ISD Delivery Special Ed Services.
Yep.
I'm looking at the details, and, you know, it says that the changes are outlined on Attachment A, but as I look at Attachment A, I can't tell the substantive details, like updated activities for locating, identifying, and evaluating students who need special education, updating process for distribution of millage funds. I mean, I don't know what that update was. Is there ways to get kind of the granular what?
Oh, yeah. We can give you the whole special ed report.
Or, well, or a summary. Is there any way to summarize some of the substantive changes?
I would not be so bold as to sum up an ISD's special education plan. We're happy to give it to you. It's public information. For that matter, we're happy to give you all of them.
I just, it's on the agenda, so I just wanted to, I didn't want to be overwhelmed. I just assumed that since you approved it, you would know kind of, in a nutshell, what were the main substantive issues. I don't need to know 500 pages. I just want to know the top four items.
Right. Each of the ISDs has a responsibility to periodically review and update and submit for approval their plans. A number of our local school districts have reflected upon staffing and staffing shortages. A number have reflected upon funding and their Act 18 funds and how they distribute their Act 18 funds. They're unique to each of the 56 ISDs. They're granular. I don't, off the top of my head, recall the specifics of Macomb ISD's special education plan, but I'm happy to share it with you in boy brief.
Would they have changed, would they have gone to the public or parents that have students that this would impact before submitting them to you?
So Dr. Michelle Harmela, who's a former special education director and in charge of the division, is saying yes.
Okay. So it's like a form, is it, I don't remember. It's a formal hearing or something?
They use their parent advisory committee.
Okay.
Has to be a part of that process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Candace Jackson, the current Michigan teacher of the year, is a third-grade teacher at Mann Learning Community in Detroit Public Schools Community District. I have gotten used to saying that. Ms. Jackson is joined by Ms. Brandy Clark, who is a mathematics teacher at Calcaska Middle School in Calcaska Public Schools. We welcome Ms. Jackson and Ms. Clark to present their report. Teachers of the year, welcome.
Greetings, everyone. It's honor, I'm honored to be able to speak to all of you again, and it's very fitting that today is World Mental Health Day because me and Brandy's presentation is going to be on SEL. Brandy's going to get us started with her introduction, and hopefully, we can get through it fairly quickly, because I know we are running short of time.
So first, just to introduce myself. Again, thank you for allowing us to be here. It's really great to be able to have a voice at the table and just share some things with you. A little background on me, there's some pictures of my family. My husband, Sean, and I live in a rural area of northern Michigan. We are out in the middle of nowhere, where I have to watch for deer every time I pull out of the driveway, and we have a flock of turkeys that frequent our bird feeder. So we are dealing with our own issues right now, because having four cats wasn't interesting enough. This summer, we added an eight-month-old puppy that was actually a rescue from one of my students. And so we are working with cat and dog negotiations currently at my household. So I am glad to be here, because that is all hidden today. Also, some background on me, I've worked in a variety of different schools. I started my career in boarding schools. I did a little bit of time in Wisconsin. I have lived in the dorms with high school kids, which is very interesting, also very noisy. So I've gotten to operate a little bit as a makeshift parent for some kids, which has been interesting. I've also worked in a charter school. I've now worked in three different public school districts in northern Michigan, and I am getting ready to enter, this summer will be my 15th year, at Camp Hia Winta. I drive for them in the summer, so I frequent the UP, and I hang out with a lot of different kids in a lot of different ways than I do during the school year. So I drop off kids for backpacking trips, hiking adventures, and all kinds of other stuff to just kind of utilize and see some of that pure Michigan stuff and get some kids outdoors. So one of the things that, across all of the jobs that I've done post-college, that I've seen is the great impact of relationships in adding to learning. So one of the things I focus on a lot in my classroom, and we focus on it a lot in our district, is collaborative learning. So when we look at collaborative learning, we look at what are the skills that are going to best prepare our kids for the future, which really, in reality, is the workforce. Yes, in my opinion, sixth grade math is very, very important. However, being able to communicate with people is actually way more important in the grand scheme of the big picture of being a good citizen and being able to contribute to society. So you will see in the slides, those are some of our students. This year, we're going to be doing, I believe it's our ninth annual pumpkin chuncheon. Our eighth-grade science teacher is teaching force and motions units right now, and in November, our kids will be making catapults and trebuchets. So one of the things that we really focus on with that particular project and in our math curriculum, where we're doing a lot of hands-on, team-based, student-driven instruction, is teaching team skills. And overall, it's more of our soft skills that we want to see for the workforce. So we're working on things like communication, leadership, problem solving, critical thinking, creativity, which is huge, thinking outside of the box, and really trying to come up with some interesting solutions, adaptability, empathy, organization, and learning that it's okay to learn through our mistakes. So we focus a lot on trying to build those skills because, again, in the grand scheme of things, those are all skills that are going to be really important when they get out into the real world, so beyond our doors. This quote here, "Our environment, the world in which we live and work, is a mirror of our attitudes and expectations," really resonates with me, because if we want to see a positive world and we want our environment around us to be positive, then we have to learn how to interact with people in a positive manner to really set the tone for the expectations and the boundaries that we hold important to us. So I know that in my classroom, if I want my students to respect me and to listen to me, it's very important for me to also respect them and listen to them. So I try to really make sure that my kids know that in my classroom, their voice is just as important to me as my voice should be to them, because really, I learn from them just as much as they do from me on a regular basis. Some of the benefits that I've seen from taking the shift in perspectives, when I first started off, I used to stand at the front of the room and lecture a lot. Now I'm walking around, and I've seen the engagement improve. As a result, attitudes and behaviors have definitely decreased. It takes off some of the emotional stress, better academic performance, and decline in some of the anxiety. And overall, a little bit of the decline in the long run over substance abuse. I did start my career as a secondary teacher, and now for the last eight, I've been in the middle school. One of the programs that I did work with was directly linked to substance abuse and trying to reduce those numbers. I worked with a lot of students that were in a court place program. Some of the benefits that educators and students get from doing some of this stuff, especially along the lines of social-emotional learning, which I feel like does really relate a lot to some of those soft skills that we want to use in the workforce. Teachers who tend to be in check with their own SEL skills and are able to effectively manage and regulate themselves tend to fare a little bit better and avoid burnout. They also tend to create a healthier sense of communication in the classroom, making students feel a lot safer and able to be heard. And then, long-term, for students, it allows them to have a better sense of community, a safer viewpoint of schools as their safe place, which helps to allow some stability if you get ahold of students at a young age and you make them feel safe and secure so that they are able to learn. It does open up the door to try to help them create more stable employment down the future, also to reduce some of the justice system involvements and some of the substance abuse things that I've mentioned before. So some of the competencies that fall under SEL are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship schools, and responsible decision-making. One of the reasons that I added this into the slideshow is because I feel like all of those things, like I said, do fall under the soft skills that we want in the workforce and for employment purposes, but they also cross bridges into families and communities and the skills that we want to see in our neighbors and in our friends and the people that we interact with. Even in my own household, my husband has autism, and so social awareness is one of the things that he struggles with because of his disability, and we practice these skills at home. So sometimes it's as much as us having a disagreement and having to sit back and say, "Okay, so what did you actually mean by this?" as opposed to just getting fired up and angry. So we have to learn some of those skills that translate into real life of interdisciplinary relationships and how to communicate with each other. And I think that most people, when they first get married, were in year two, do come across those as well, so. Some of these things were already mentioned, that the Michigan Department of Education is already doing as initiatives. The SEL and Children's Mental Health Network, which is trying to get mental health needs addressed for students across Michigan. The Adult SEL Community of Practice, which is 19 districts, they're looking at adult SEL and how that impacts students' SEL and their behaviors in the classroom. They are doing district-level scans of systems to support SEL at the school, and they are working on developing some professional learning tools to support training and implementation. There's also Universal Screeners, Comprehensive School Mental Health System Feasibility Study, which is guidance document on universal screeners for schools that includes information on the purpose, the audience, the types of data that's collected, how it aligns to MTSS tiers, and considerations when selecting screeners and additional resources. Feasibility student, successful implementation of comprehensive school-based Feasibility Student, Successful Implementation of Comprehensive School-Based Mental Health Systems. And then this year, our Regional Teachers of the Year are focusing on that for the 2023-24 school year. We are working on creating a toolkit that makes it easy for teachers to access information to be able to help within our classrooms. And we're also focusing on the community piece and creating presentations that would be available for our communities. So we're working on grade-band presentations that we could use to host community nights so that we can get that parent involvement. Because if you don't have parent buy-in, then your problems aren't going to go away and your buy-in isn't there, so it's not going to work. So we do want that community piece to be really highlighted so that we can get our parents involved and in our schools as much as possible.
So as Brandy said, SEL is for everyone. It's not just for certain students or certain places or certain people. Everyone needs, we need these soft skills, skills like communication and goal-setting and staying motivated and decision-making skills. And we need to be able to build and maintain positive relationships. And as we heard earlier, that Goal Three for the Michigan Top Ten Strategic Plan is to allow for improved mental health and safety for all of our students and learners. And one of the ways that we can do that is to equip the teachers and the support staff in ways to help students navigate through their behavioral support or their mental health issues. Because children who are mentally whole, they perform better. They perform better at all of the things that I just mentioned before, like communication and goal-setting and staying motivated. Let me change this slide. And there is a growing body of research that supports this. Studies show that SEL can positively impact the brain. We talked about earlier how trauma can impact you negatively, but SEL has been shown to positively impact the brain. It can impact the brain with emotional regulation, empathy, decision-making, and all of those skills can greatly impact a student's academic achievement. It can improve their emotional and social well-being, and it can create safer schools, which is all kind of tied into Goal Three that we were talking about earlier today. SEL, it also builds bridges with the families, the communities, and the school. It promotes communication, empathy, collaboration. It fosters trust and understanding among families, schools, and community, and that can ultimately enhance the students. It enhances their holistic development and their well-being all around because we want our children to be well all around. We want them to be, you know, we want to cater to the whole child. And through equipping our teachers and creating this toolkit, we hope that we can create an environment where the student feels loved, challenged, and prepared all the way around so that they can take those soft skills into the community that they live in, they can form these relationships with their peers, and that they can take these skills home. And like Brandy said, in your home, you need these skills. So these are things that I think everyone should be able to appreciate, if that makes In a presentation earlier, I think maybe the first presentation, we discussed some of the barriers and how the Michigan Department of Education is addressing some of these barriers through the Top Ten Strategic Plan. We are definitely on the right track because we heard earlier that we've had a pretty large increase in a budget from zero to, I don't remember the figure, but I'm delighted in how the Michigan Department of Education and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services are collaborating together to make changes that we need because, you know, in the time that we live in, mental health is everyone's business right now. So I'm happy to see all of those changes. And in conclusion, improving the health and safety and the wellness of our students, it is everyone's business. I'm happy to see the work that Scott Hutchins and the Behavioral Health Unit presented earlier today, and hopefully, we're on track to providing the services that the students can benefit for and that they do need because it's time to address the elephant in their room. Go ahead and turn the page. So as far as the M2A updates, I've been pretty busy for the month of September and going into October. I had the privilege to attend the CAC Retreat along with the Region Four Teacher of the Year, Bridget Solva. I won't go into too much detail because we'll be presenting together at the next meeting, I believe. And we can go into details of the things that we talked about there, but what we did talk about was, we talked about the difference between advocacy and advising. I learned that as a member of the CAC, we are there to advise the Michigan, well, not we, they are there to advise the Michigan Department of Education, which is not quite the same as advocating for your own personal initiative. So not there to push my agenda. And as a CAC, we speak as kind of as one voice, and this is what we're there for. Another thing that we did at the meeting, we spent a large part of the day going over the annual review, which they talked about a little bit earlier. We highlighted some of the ways or some of the activities and accomplishment that they have had with the State Board of Education, the Michigan Department of Education, and the CAC in collaboration in a way that they are affecting the students and children with special needs. I also had the privilege of making a trip up to Escanaba to visit Nanette Hansen and our Region One Regional Teacher of the Year, Gina Peppin. I visited their lower elementary school, and I was able to visit some of the classrooms and their music program, which was pretty cool because everyone had drums and tambourines, and I felt like I was in a scene from a movie. Made me want to move to the UP. In addition to visiting several classes, I had the opportunity to attend an MTSS meeting there. And I must say, I was quite impressed with the structure and the efficiency and the diligence of the committee. They meet weekly, and I was able to take a lot of notes and actually resources back to my own district because I was, like I said, quite impressed with the way that the meeting was run. And it seems like they are on track to dealing with the needs of each and every student up there. So I really enjoyed that. That might have been a highlight of my visit, other than the luncheon that we had, where I probably had the best pumpkin bars I've ever had. So one of Nanette's colleagues has like a pumpkin farm, and she made these pumpkin bars. And so that might be a reason to go back up there. I had the opportunity to make a couple of videos and commercials in the last month. I did my Proud Michigan Educator video for the Michigan Department of Education. I also had Michigan State University's College of Education, they came to my school, and they did a video called "Engrained," and it's about teachers who work in the inner city and their dedication to their work. And that was pretty cool to be recognized by my alma mater. It was great because I had the opportunity to talk about the resilience and the brilliance of the city of Detroit and why I chose to teach there. So I really enjoyed that. And then, one last video I got to do was, I did a video with Detroit Public Television where I got to talk about PBS and how the programming there has helped me on my trail to become the Michigan Teacher of the Year. And that was pretty cool because who doesn't love Sesame Street and Mr. Rogers? And of course, they were my first teachers, and so it, you know, it was no joke to really talk about the fact that that is where I learned a lot of what I know. Mr. Rogers was my first teacher. And then, lastly, I had the privilege of throwing out the first pitch at the Detroit Tigers Teacher Appreciation Game. And so that opportunity was very fun, and it was a tremendous honor. And I got to make friends with Paws. He unsuccessfully tried to teach me how to throw a baseball. It got to kind of almost where it needed to be, but I don't have a whole lot of coordination, but it was a lot of fun and a great experience for myself and my family. Other than that, I guess I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Rice and the board and all of the members here who are, once again, welcoming me and listening to our presentation. And as always, it's been a pleasure. So if you have any questions, I guess we are ready for questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. Board members, reflections, questions? Don't be shy. They won't bite. Ms. Lipton.
I'm curious. What are your, both your impressions of just, you know, how the school year is going? What is your thoughts or predictions or?
That's a loaded question. My district unfortunately has experienced quite a bit of trauma within our family units over the last month. We've had some parents deceased over the last month. So we've been putting out a lot of fires in our classrooms. But overall, we've been doing a pretty good job as a staff of trying to provide normalcy for those kids, even though we come in and we usually have to like talk for a little while before we can go into our classrooms. And we usually have to debrief about the day at the end. We've been doing a pretty good job of putting on the face to be their normalcy. And I think that that's one thing that public schools really do a great job of. Teachers bring their A-game every day. And we try to make the most, probably the best part of some of our kids' days. Like yesterday, for example, I would say I had 100% engagement in my classroom, but it was a hands-on activity. We were exploring area. I had kids up, they were covering desktops with clipboards and measuring with anything but a ruler. That was the rule yesterday. You can measure with anything you want but a ruler. And so just looking at things from a different standpoint and kind of being a little outside of the box, when you can tell that kids are really kind of struggling, we're doing our best to really kind of uplift them and give them the best part of their day that we can. So we're trying to impact them in as positive of a way as we can when we have them.
And for me, it's kind of funny because after the first week of school, you know, me and my principal, we looked at each other and was like, you know, this was pretty smooth sailing, you know? It seems like after, you know, anytime you have administration switch over, it takes a year or so for everything to kind of settle. And we said, you know, this is going to be a great year. And then, you know, now it's like, wow. You know, things have kind of, kind of not necessarily taken a turn for the worse, but it's definitely been some challenges, and the students have been challenging, to say the least. Issues that you don't expect to deal with until maybe in the spring where they have spring fever. So a lot of putting out fires and whatnot. But I think that we are on the right track. We are trying our best to address a lot of the issues. And we've had a lot of staff turnover at my building this year. So I think that it's getting the students acclimated, getting the new teachers acclimated, and trying to get everyone on the same page. I think that we're on the right track, but definitely was the calm before the storm, it feels like.
September is definitely the month of setting routines and setting boundaries and just getting into the feel of things. I would say end of October, beginning of November, we would have totally different answers for you. Because that's when we're into things, we're into our curriculum, the kids know what our expectations are, and that's when everybody really starts to thrive, is that time going in towards Thanksgiving break.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Other questions or comments? No? So just a thought. So I love these presentations that weave cross-community. We've been doing this for a few years with the M-toy and the R-toy each month. I think they're very, very effective. Typically, the R-toy chooses a topic because the M-toy gets so many bites of the apple, and then the M-toy wraps around the R-toy presentation. You chose to do that around SEL. I thought what was powerful was, you talked about SEL at home in a fashion, you know, the relationship between you and your husband, which was really interesting. And then, and you talked about SEL building bridges. And we can see the bridge-building between Detroit and Calcasca, between Detroit and Escanaba. That's really powerful as well. Three very different communities, all that have embraced elements of Tier One, children's mental health, as well as Tier Two and Tier Three, children's mental health. And board members, for those of you who aren't educators, Tier One is for everyone. And there's a feeling that we all need to practice particular things, whether we're in Calcasca, Detroit, or Escanaba, or Walla Walla, Washington, for that matter. So I think that that's really powerful. I think we learn a lot of lessons from one another if we're open to those lessons. You've been married two years, is that right?
Yeah.
Wow, good luck.
Thanks.
Quite an institution.
I think he's the one that needs the luck, but okay.
You know what? I was talking about mutually. You know, I believe in the institution. I think it's a good one. Thank you so much, Teachers of the Year. We appreciate you. We're members. We are moving on to state and federal legislative update at 4:24. Marty Ackley, the Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. And he will be followed by Dr. Pritchett, Chair of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee, and then Dr. Robinson with his typical 30-minute report on NASP.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. It's been a pretty full day, and I know that happy hour ends at seven, so I'll get this going pretty quickly. First of all, we all know, we sent a press release out today that the governor signed House Bill 4752 to allow retired public school employees to return to work in a public school immediately following their employment with a salary cap of $15,000 a calendar year. So that's great news. The Senate Education Committee met this afternoon. It took testimony on educator evaluations. Dr. Kennedy testified in support of the bills, but highlighted the importance of including some measure of student growth that is locally determined between the teacher and the administrator. The committee also reported out Senate Bill 518, a bill that would extend by three years the authorization for individuals to earn a special ed teaching endorsement through the completion of an alternate route program. On the House floor is, House of Representatives floor, is House Bill 5021, a bill that would revise the default option for newly hired public school employees to be automatically opted into Tier One, which is the retirement plan available to public school employees. Also introduced recently were some dyslexia bills, Senate Bill 567, Senate Bill 568, and House Bill 5098. We are currently working with the sponsors. They are much better than they were last term, but there are some things that we need to work out. So I know that there is a resolution on the table on this issue. And the State Board of Legislative Committee met on September 28th and discussed several of the issues I've shared today, but I'll pass it over to Committee Chair Dr. Judy Pritchett to share more.
Thank you. You've had a chance to look at the minutes. We appreciate that because it pretty well sums up our discussions. Just to highlight that, at the end of the meeting, we did have a discussion about something that we haven't been able to do in the last couple of years, and that is have this body meet with some of the leaders of the legislature for a lunch and an opportunity to talk. Because the legislature is very busy at this point, the committee decided that we would put that off and look at it for the first of the year, January or February, and possibly look at it on a day other than a normal board day, which would give us some more time because we get into time constraints if we try to do it. And also, meet at the Capitol Building instead of handing legislators come here, especially if they're running between committee meetings, et cetera. here, especially if they're running between committee meetings, et cetera. So just keep that in mind. Our next meeting is November 2nd. We did have a discussion about whether, when and if we would meet prior to the first of the year, then after that, depending, again, on whether, when the legislature may be done for this year, which we don't have a date on yet, I don't think, or do we?
We understand it could be like the 9th of November.
Okay.
So there's basically four weeks left in this session.
Okay. All right. So we'll keep you updated on that. But we do have a meeting November 2, at 12:00.
Any other questions for Mr. Ackley or Dr. Pritchett?
I have a question about the dyslexia bills. Is there a provision in the bills that a parent could get outside testing? Kind of like there is with IEP. So if there's a comprehensive test, a parent can bring that to the school in introducing an IEP.
That's a good question. I do not know that specific answer, but we will get that for you. I know that Senate Bill 567 requires professional learning regarding dyslexia for personnel providing reading instruction, as well as requiring dyslexia screening for all kids. But I don't know if there's a, if there's a provision for it.
Yeah, I know. Like with IEPs, there's required screening too, but parents can also go to an outside source and get screened and diagnosed and share that with their local school districts. So I'm curious if that's also possible within dyslexia.
I'll check that out.
Other questions for either Mr. Ackley or Dr. Pritchett before we turn it over to Dr. Robinson? Other questions? Okay. Dr. Robinson, I presume?
I have the report.
Holy moly. Okay. Hearing that. No other questions, no other comments. We're going to pivot. We're going to go to our two resolutions. And, Board, I believe Ms. Justice distributed each of them to you this morning. Why don't you take a moment to look for those? And I'll entertain a motion to move the FAFSA resolution. Moved by Dr. Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Second and a half by Mr. Bullock. Any discussion? Dr. Pritchett, would you like to read it into the record, or would you like someone else to read it into the record?
I can read it into the record.
Okay.
If I start to falter, somebody pick it up for me, okay? Resolution opposing Senate Bill 463, requirement of FAFSA completion for high school graduation. Whereas Michigan State Board of Education supports the goals, Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan as developed in 2019 and 2020, and approved by the Board in 2020. In particular, Goal Four, expand elementary, excuse me, secondary learning opportunities for all students. Goal Five, increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. And Goal Six, increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential, which align with Governor Gretchen Whitmer's goal of 60% of adults in Michigan with a post-secondary degree or skill credential by the year 2030. Whereas, the State Board of Education strongly encourages families of students considering post-secondary education or training programs to complete the free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, to determine whether their children are eligible for post-secondary financial aid. Whereas, the State Board of Education recognizes that the completion of FAFSA is a necessary prerequisite for federal Pell Grants, as well as post-secondary scholarships available to Michigan students, such as the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, Michigan Reconnect Scholarship, scholarships awarded under the Michigan Promise of Own Authority Act, and the Tuition Incentives Program. And further recognizes that for students to have access to the state of Michigan MySSG Student Portal, they must have a current-year FAFSA on file. Whereas, the State Board of Education strongly recommends that all high schools in Michigan provide current information and process assistance with FAFSA form to every member of their graduating class. Whereas, the State Board of Education strongly recommends that the state legislature appropriate the necessary funds to local school districts, to hire guidance counselors, and other college-access professionals who can meaningfully assist students and families to explore the multitude of post-secondary pathways available in our state and complete FAFSA in order to assist students to obtain post-secondary credentials beyond high school without incurring a substantial amount of student loan debt. Whereas, the State Board of Education has expressed its concerns regarding Senate Bill 463, that would require all high school students in the graduating class of 2005 and beyond to submit the FAFSA as a requirement to graduate from high school. Whereas, this proposed new non-academic requirement, if approved and signed into law, would be the only non-academic requirement for graduation, and could create an unintended barrier to graduation for those students whose parents are unfamiliar or uncomfortable with FAFSA, or whose parents are, who are familiar with, but nonetheless uncomfortable with completing the FAFSA. Whereas, this legislation does not recognize those students who have decided not to attend a higher education institution and who are exploring other career opportunities. Whereas, this legislation could create a hardship for families who are unfamiliar with the FAFSA process and could unintentionally put additional stress on students whose parents do not complete the form or who neglect to inform the school of their concerns. Therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education does not support Senate Bill 463 in its present form, and urges that this legislation be revised to eliminate the requirement for completion of FAFSA form to graduate from high school, and strongly recommends the legislature appropriate the necessary funds to local school districts to hire guidance counselors and other college-access professionals who can meaningfully assist students and families to explore the multitude of post-secondary pathways available in our state and complete FAFSA in order to assist students to obtain post-secondary credentials beyond high school without incurring a substantial amount of student loan debt.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. We appreciate that. Any discussion associated therewith? Would you like to follow up?
Sure. We do appreciate the conversation that we were able to have with the sponsor, Senator Kamlerie. And we did express some of these concerns. We understand the intent. We also understand very clearly that currently, and we've talked about this quite a bit, with staffing shortages the way they are, high schools, administrators, families are faced with a lot of challenges. And we just believe that this is an un, a burdensome requirement versus taking the positive, trying to get some individuals into the schools, either college-access counselors or an additional counselor, to work with high school students to show them what is available, to help them with that FAFSA form, if indeed that's what their family believes will be the most beneficial for them, and to recognize that, you know, beyond the FAFSA form, if indeed they do decide that they're going to avail themselves to some student aid, that in the long run, that student aid may mean that they will have a student loan that will have to be paid off in certain increments. That's all information that becomes overwhelming sometimes, especially for those students who may be just making it through graduation as it is. We want to support them. We don't have an issue. I think the Board has proven that with three goals here. We don't want to support our students to graduate from high school. We don't want to put another non-academic, as Mitch has pointed out several times, non-academic barrier in front of them, but instead, take the positive approach and provide them with some assistance.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Anything else from anyone else? Ms. Snyder?
It's very well written. I mean, not every single thing is exactly how I would put it, but I will say that requiring FAFSA as a high school graduation requirement is very much a sophisticated form of financial oppression, in my mind. And so, you know, I just think that we need to, it's a good way to let them know. This is not a bill that any of us support.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan?
Yep. I appreciate that the author in the "Therefore Be It Resolved," which is kind of the main substance of a resolution, only mentioned that the legislature appropriate the, appropriate the necessary funds, not appropriate additional funds, because I believe when you add in all the federal and all the funding, you're well over 17,000 per student. I think that it's more than enough funding. So I don't think they'd have to appropriate anything additional, but that, and that's not what the resolution says. And also, the observation that this would be the first non-academic requirement, not only could this provide unintended barriers, but I think it could open Pandora's Box to all other kind of creative, non-academic requirements, both perhaps on the left, the right, all political persuasions could all of a sudden feel that they can go in that direction. So I think that it's wise that we keep Pandora's Box closed.
Okay.
Probably supporting the resolution. Thank you.
An opposing Pandora.
This Pandora.
This Pandora, yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Other board members? Hearing none? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Absolutely.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Until he absent. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much. Board, we have a second motion. I'll entertain the moving of that second motion. Ms. Snyder?
The Board moves to adopt a resolution in recognition of October being 20, October of 2023 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. I'll get through it.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
We have support. We have a motion from Ms. Snyder, support from Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder, to you to read it into the record, please.
Whereas dyslexia is a specific learning difficulty that is neurobiological in origin and is characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent word recognition and by poor spelling and decoding abilities. Whereas, these difficulties typically are caused by a deficit in the phonological component of language that is unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities and to the provision of effective classroom instruction. Whereas, secondary consequences may include problems in reading comprehension and reduced reading experience that can impede the growth of vocabulary and background knowledge. Whereas, dyslexia occurs on a continuum of severity affecting between 10% and 20% of the population, according to the National Institutes of Health. Whereas, dyslexia is the most common learning disability and affects 80% to 90% of all individuals with a learning disability. Whereas, dyslexia affects all segments of society regardless of race, income, educational background, or ability. Whereas, the Michigan State Board of Education has committed itself to supporting Michigan schools and teachers with resources, materials, and professional development. Whereas, through effective dyslexia screening, students with dyslexia can be identified as early as preschool, long before their learning challenges have resulted in learning disabilities. Whereas, early identification and intervention is critical to ensure individuals with dyslexia receive focus, evidence-based intervention allowing the promotion of self-awareness and self-empowerment, and the provision of necessary accommodations to ensure school and life success. Whereas, literacy is a critical skill needed for educational success, and students who do not read at grade level by third grade are four times more likely not to graduate from high school with a diploma. Whereas, the Michigan State Board of Education is fully committed to the goal that every child will read on grade level. Whereas, our state will benefit from an increased awareness of the nature of dyslexia, the early warning signs of dyslexia, and the value of multisensory, structured language interventions for students with dyslexia. Whereas, greater recognition and understanding are necessary to ensure that individuals with dyslexia living in the state of Michigan and all other Americans with dyslexia are accurately identified and provided with appropriate services so that they might lead maximally productive lives. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 2023 as Dyslexia Awareness Month and encourages all school systems to engage their schools, families, and communities in activities that create a culture of understanding, support, encouragement, and learning for individuals affected by dyslexia.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Do you have anything else to share on this?
I do not.
Okay, very good. That was fairly comprehensive. Does anybody else have anything else to share on the, on the resolution? Additional discussion? Dr. Pritchett?
I certainly appreciate the resolution. I am wondering, and I think Liz has them on a separate sheet of paper.
I have some.
You have?
Yeah.
Three, if you would consider three possible additions, which I had Liz's copy, so... Yes, please, instead of me trying to read through them, because I've read enough already. Oh, wow, you put them in already. Now that everybody has a copy, you'll see that they are bolded. The insertion of two additional "whereas's" and then a "be it further resolved after the first resolved." So I'll leave it to everybody to read.
Can I, can I read these? Do you want to move them, and I'll read them, so that people can hear at least?
Sure. I would move for consideration of two additional "whereas's" and one "be it further resolved."
And they read as, whereas the Michigan Department of Education issued the Michigan Dyslexia Handbook, A Guide to Accelerating Learner Outcomes and Literacy, a 41-page guide in August 2022, as an important resource for local and intermediate school district educators. And then down below, after "whereas," greater recognition. Whereas, the state senate has been working on dyslexia legislation in collaboration with MDE for the last few years. And then the final, be it further resolved that the State Board of Education encourages the state legislature to finalize and pass legislation in collaboration with MDE to identify and address challenges of dyslexia in Michigan students.
So you are, you are offering those as friendly amendments?
Yes, as friendly amendment.
I, yeah, I guess she has to accept first.
Okay. So, so as, as, as offering friendly amendments, you have the right to accept or reject them. If you accept them, then it goes to the secondor. If the secondor accepts them, then they, then they are woven into the framework of the resolution. If you don't, there's discussion and then a vote thereon.
I accept them.
Okay, very good. So we have an acceptance by the, by the motion offerer, a motion, a, an agreement by the motion secondor. They are woven into the framework of the resolution. Do we have any other discussion associated therewith? Mr. McMillan?
The only thing I have concerns about with the friendly amendment that was accepted is the, in the "further be it resolved," urging the state legislature to pass legislation that, in collaboration with MDE, to identify and address challenges of the dyslexia. I guess I may disagree with how that ultimately looks, you know, how that, you know, how they address the challenges of dyslexia. There's maybe debate about what would best and what might not be. But for now, I mean, I just wanted to mention that because I don't want somebody saying, well, you, you agree to it. I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I think in the future, if there is that legislation, I may disagree with how they are going about those changes, addressing the challenges in the, in the legislation.
Well, I think that's right. There's, there's no doubt about that. And we're hanging our hat on in collaboration with MDE.
I've been known to disagree with MDE.
You may have a different hat. Right. So any other discussion associated therewith? Going once, twice, thrice, hearing none? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh? Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Until he absent. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you very much, Board. Two unanimous resolutions. Who knew? Mr. Ackley?
My high-octane legislative team came up with an answer to Ms. Snyder's question about parents. Parents are allowed to get an outside screening, but it doesn't take the place of a screening in school. It would also just ensure that federal IDEA is followed and can inform an IEP.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Board, we are at Board Member Comment, 448. Who has? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I referenced some interests that I've had over the past year or so on the full-service community school model, and it began with an exploration of whether that model would be beneficial to our promise zone communities. And I think that there's a broader application. So in light of that, I was able to attend a meeting with sort of the founders of the community school model as it began in the 70s and 80s in New York. And they, unlike many school reform people, they actually are now looking back on their work to evaluate its effectiveness, and they put together this piece called The Community Schools Revolution. And they are, are very, very encouraged by what they thought would work many years ago, and now they've actually looked back and have seen the results. And so, this, this short, very, very readable report, I went ahead and bought a copy for everyone on the Board. It's also available for free as a PDF if people don't like. I went ahead and bought these because I know some people like to have hard copies. I've already distributed two, and so I would just like to share it with. Thank you. Everyone. And if you don't want to read it, all that I would ask is.
I did get my copy.
Yep. Here, I have a copy. That you just pay it forward to somebody else. But like I said, if you don't want to read the hard copy, it's also available for free in a PDF download, which I did, so I'm going to give you my copy.
Thank you.
And, and I just hope that we can have further conversations at this board table because it's, it's very, very exciting, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, thank you. Ms. Lipton?
I couldn't click on the CAC Annual Report. Could you just verify that it's embedded in there and/or send it separately? Because I couldn't, it wasn't clicking when I went to the agenda. It's embedded in our email.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. McMillan?
Earlier today, there was comments about people at this table talking about science and questioning the science. And just wanted to go over a few things. Like in Science News 2020, the science condemned anybody who said that coronavirus was created in a lab. They said it was fueled by conspiracy theorists. Also, Nature Magazine study 2020, our analysis, our analyses clearly show that SARS-CoV-2 is not a laboratory-constructed virus. Fast forward to 2023, Biden's Department of Energy and the FBI both, both say that the virus was most likely confirmed from a lab leak. And also, NIH emails from FOIA show that the effort by Dr. Fauci and others to rule out the lab-leak theory was extensive. Also wanted to mention that, you know, focused, that, you know, the Twitter files and other FOIA, and other FOIAs have made it clear, and also that there was an effort by the government to silence, to censor leading scientists from University of Oxford, Stanford, Harvard, virologists, epidemiologists. They illegally were censoring legitimate debate regarding COVID. They were heavy-handed. We do know that there are bullies in government and authoritarians who don't want debate, they're afraid of debate, they're afraid of discussion. They want to silence by saying that misinformation, that's, that's classic, that's Orwellian, that anything that disagrees with them is misinformation, disinformation. We see this regularly from authoritarians, dictators, and apparently people on, at this table even. So I just wanted to make it clear that there's numerous examples of where the science, death with COVID versus death from COVID numbers were played with over and over again. But there's myriad of times where the science that wasn't supposed to be challenged ended up being wrong and had to be changed. And particularly when it's something that is unknown, there should be vibrant discussion and debate within the science community. Instead, those who want to control, want to censor, want to shut down, they are bullies. And it's clear that public health, government health is politicized. It's not really based on science a lot of times, and we saw that. And I hope next time we'll be more open to debate and won't be afraid of the interaction and discussion from leading scientists and others. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
I just want to, I wasn't going to go there, but when you said next time, it's like, okay, one thing I want to say about how this was handled. Next time scares me because when we consider House congressional hearings that talk about the intelligence around the origin of the virus and how it was politicized, and you consider the fact that the last time we had a convention on biological warfare, intentional or not, and you think about how it played out, and you think about the process and what it looks like to speak truth into the future, future generations, whether it's another 100 years before we have a pandemic, or it isn't, the way in which this was politicized is extremely dangerous for what that next time looks like. I will not descend into the territory of the politicization of that as we move forward because the truth needs to be breathed into the future. Because, again, whether it's 100 years from now or next time is next year, and it's truly biological warfare since the 60s, since we considered what that treaty's looked like internationally. And so what we've done here at this table in the last three years and what we've done politically in our country is just a true shame. So that's, you know, there's, there's points at which you stop engaging on that level and you understand that to lead, you actually have to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Anyone else care to share? Hearing none. Board members, our future meetings are November 14th, December 12th, and January 9th, all Tuesdays, all 9:30, all regular meetings. If there are any topics Board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify. Ms. Evans, for me, it is 4:57. We give you the gift of a little bit of time.